Good evening. I'm Mayor Dean Brooke and I'd like to welcome you to the November 17th, Durango City Council Meeting. Tonight, may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Counselor Betteen. Counselor Nozworthy.
Present.
Counselor Yussa.
Here.
Mayor Protem Baxter.
Present.
Mayor Brooke.
Here. Thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to recognize any conflicts of interest, any city councilors have with any of the agendized items on the top, on the agenda this evening?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move on to our public participation. And I'll just read a little script here and hope that those of you that are listening in can follow along. It's a little longer than normal because of our COVID state. And so it'll give you instructions on how to access our meeting this evening. To keep the meeting moving along, we're limiting comments to three minutes. You will be muted once you reach that limit, even if you're in the middle of a sentence. That's hardly ever enforced, but we like to keep the meeting moving along. Please use the raise hand function if you're using a Zoom app to indicate that you would like to provide comment. If you're calling into the meeting using your telephone, press star nine and raise your hand. Our moderator will announce the next person to speak and we'll unmute you at that time and invite you into our conversation. Please start by adding your, by stating your first and last name and your home address for the record. Be advised, this is a live television broadcast. Your video camera will show up when you speak. Or if you're calling on your telephone, your phone number will be displayed. With that, Mitchell, do we have any folks that are in line for public participation this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and member of council. I do see someone who has raised their hand. Debbie, it is your turn to address council. Please give us your full name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, City Council. This is Sweetie Marbury, and I'm calling in to speak on the emergency mask mandate that will appear later on the agenda. I've read the mandate, and I've also read the letter from San Juan Basin Health Department. I would encourage the council to expand the boundaries of this map to the entire city limits. I would also encourage council to have a penalty for the first offense as a temporary loss of a business license. I saw on the news today that Albuquerque has an immediate loss of business license. I believe that Telluride and Breckenridge also have changed their penalties and speak about a business license loss. I agree with the San Juan Basin Health Department that our numbers are rising. In order to flatten the curve, the city council needs to show the leadership that you have by expanding and enforcing with stronger penalties. This is for our economy and also for the health of our public. Thank you very much for your leadership, and I hope that you will strengthen and expand on this mask ordinance.
Thank you, former Mayor Marbury. I appreciate that. And Mitchell, do we have another guest for public participation?
Nobody else has raised their hand. We do have quite a few attendees in the list, though. If you are here to address council during public participation, now is your chance. Please utilize the raise hand function. And if you have called in on a phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand as well. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody else. Oh, we just got the phone call. Hold on. Phone number ending in eight, five, seven, one. Please unmute yourself. Give us your full name and your address for the record, and you have three minutes. You can press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is David McElveney. I'm a local business owner here in Durango, and I appreciate the efforts to increase the amount of testing that's happening here in La Plata County. If you could address at some point in the evening what is being done to introduce rapid testing, and I'd like to propose that if nothing is in motion, I would like to be involved in raising the necessary funds to get rapid testing in place. I know that Cortez has that ability now, and I think the turnaround time of 20 or 30 minutes will help us address our concerns with COVID in a much more effective way than having to wait for what took my wife seven days to get a result. So I would be very, very enthusiastic about being involved in the business community, raising every dollar that's necessary to get the equipment for rapid testing very much.
Thank you, Mr. Malvani, or McElveney, sorry. And that will be discussed, well, not that specific issue, but we will have perhaps Leigh Angellon, the executive director of San Juan Basin Health, is listening in and may be able to address that a little later in the evening if she's still with us, and talk about the benefits of rapid testing versus the more traditional swab tests that we've been accustomed to with a longer turnaround time. It's part of my problem this evening. I am live from Puerto Rico, and I had to have a test within a window of 72 hours of arriving here in Puerto Rico. That wasn't available to me in Durango, so I was able to get one in Denver, and it was about a 24-hour turnaround for us to end up the swab test, so allow me to get off the plane here in Puerto Rico, which is another whole story of their enforcement issues here. But the ability to increase our testing is very, very critical to the success of managing our COVID spread. So perhaps we can talk about that, and thanks for asking that question. Mitchell, any other folks in the, for public participation this evening yet?
I don't see anybody that has raised their hand, but I do see that we have a couple other new people that have joined us since we gave the instructions. So I'll say that one more time. If you're here to speak to council during public participation, the time is now. Please utilize the raise hand function within Zoom to speak during public participation.
If not, I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Baxter to introduce the next topic on the agenda as we move through the agenda. And if, and I will speak, I know we have a couple proclamations that I'd like to read, pretty exciting for this evening. And but Counselor, Mayor Protem Baxter, might we have the next agenda item, please?
Yes, the next agenda item is proclamations and presentations, and 5.1 is Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you so much. I am having a little technical difficulty, and my agenda disappeared somewhere out on the, out on the back deck of this hotel, it seems. So with that, I'd like to create a, to read this proclamation for Native American Heritage Month for November 2020. Whereas the city council and staff of Durango are dedicated to advancing the initiatives to institute diversity, equity, and inclusion, and are committed to ensuring all residents have equitable opportunities to lead peaceful, productive, and safe lives. And whereas the land we gather on today is the ancestral lands and territories of the N'chut, Ute, Apache, the Pueblos, Opi, Zuni, and the Dine Nation. And whereas Native American Heritage Month is celebrated every year to recognize Native American cultures, contributions, history, traditions, art, and land. And whereas the history and culture of the city of Durango have been significantly influenced by Native Americans, whose customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of the deep legacy throughout our area. And whereas by recognizing National Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich tapestry of indigenous peoples and honor their sacrifices, which we recognize is inextricably woven into the history of this country and our region. And whereas, Native Americans have enriched our heritage and continue to add to all aspects of our community through their generosity of culture and the continued practice of teaching economic, environmental, and cultural sustainability. Now therefore, Idene Brooke, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, hereby proclaim November 2020 as Native American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures of the indigenous people, to raise awareness about our shared history, and acknowledge the important contributions that Native Americans have made to our community and our nation. Thank you, Dean Brooke, Mayor of Durango. Appreciate that very, very much.
So item 5.2? Do we want to move on, or do you want to say something?
No, that's 5.2 is a proclamation honoring Durango's Transgender Population Week. So this is a little lengthy, but hang with me. This is, whereas November 20th is the International Transgender Day of Remembrance, a day to remember and honor the people worldwide who have lost their lives over the past year through anti-transgender violence. And whereas International Transgender Day of Remembrance seeks to bring awareness to the effects of race and gender in transgender population. And whereas women comprise fewer than 22% of all people murdered in the US last year, and 98.6% of all transgender people murdered. And whereas white transgender people make up 55% of the transgender population, and less than 3% of those murdered. And whereas the number of black women murdered in the United States last year is comparable to their percentage of the total US population. And whereas black women comprise 8% of the US adult transgender population, yet 79% of 35 transgender people murdered in the US this year. And whereas Transgender Awareness Week is November 14th through the 20th, a week to recognize the wide variety of positive contributions living transgender people are progressively making in our communities and nation. And it's inspired transgender people, their allies, to step up with their voices and actions. And whereas transgender people are as likely to live in rural areas as non-transgender people. And Durango accordingly has a significant population of transgender and non-binary people who live, work, and play, and volunteer here, and are proud to call Durango home. And whereas Durango, like most places in the United States, is a place that still displays anti-transgender bias in many areas, including employment, healthcare, and local law enforcement practices. And whereas studies show that when we decrease bias towards one part of our community, we create a safer, more welcoming community for everyone. Now therefore, Idene Broke, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November 14th through the 20th of 2020 as honoring Durango's Transgender Population Week. Dean Broke, Mayor of Durango. Thank you for that. And I hope to be giving a reading at the, on Friday evening at the Transgender Day of Remembrance, something that I've done for the past two years. And it's always a very moving and telling evening. With that, Mayor Protem, may I have the next agenda item, please?
Yes, so.
I think Jude, I think Jude was trying to say something, Dean.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, Jude Harrison, if you're available, to make, speak to this issue.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Good. So thank you, Mayor Brooke, and thank you on behalf of the transgender and non-binary children, teens, and adults of Durango, and for our families, our parents, siblings, children, in-laws, and for those whose family rejected them when they transitioned, their chosen family. We're holding our seventh Transgender Day of Remembrance for Durango this Friday, November 20th, at 6:30. It will be virtual, and Mayor Broke said he'll be there. And for safety reasons this year, we're requesting pre-registration, just to give that heads up. And you can find the link for registration on the events on the Unitarian Universal Fellowship of Durango Facebook page. So again, thank you for proclaiming honoring Durango's Transgender Population Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Jude. I appreciate it very much. Big population in our community, and as was stated, a very giving and humble population.
So on to 5.3?
Absolutely.
That would be the update on the Utilities Administration Building project.
Thank you. Can we have a staff present that, that topic to the public this evening?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Broke and City Council. My name is Jared Biggs. I'm the Assistant Utilities Director for the city, and I'm going to go ahead and flip to a screen share here. Can everybody see that all right?
Looks good. Thank you.
Great, great. So I'm here to give just an update on the Santa Rita Water Reclamation Facility Admin Building that has been under construction last year and throughout this year. This is a pretty good picture of it here, but we'll go through a little more of a virtual tour, talk about some of the things that have been in progress and some things that we still have to go. So. So, you know, the first thing, the last presentation provided to council were these slides. I took pictures direct from it, from this June 1st, 2020 meeting. So you can see a pretty significant difference in the construction. It was still, it still wasn't all framed in at that point in time. Now it's actually, we received a CO, a certificate of occupancy, two weeks ago. Although there's still a number of punch list items, we are moving ahead. A lot of things have happened even since I took this picture on the right on November 12th. They've done some hydro mulch. They've continued working on landscape. And hopefully we'll be, we'll be getting some of those facilities open, obviously to establish the landscape there. We'll have it all fenced off, but things are progressing. So just kind of a virtual walk through the building as it stands right now. This is a picture of the lobby. You know, this lobby, it's all, the whole building, as is required, and we want to be inclusive, is designed to meet all ADA accessible standards. And so you can see, we've got some pretty wide space. And we're actually working with the Mountain Studies Institute to potentially program some of this space, particularly in the lobby, for some of their, you know, educational outreach, educational opportunities on water. And we actually have a comprehensive interpretive plan that they had developed that we're going to try to implement some of those ideas into these spaces. So. The laboratory, about two weeks ago, we moved the laboratory from the old chamber building, as we called it, over in the parking lot or across the parking lot from the site, to the current building. So the laboratory is operating and functional today. You can see that picture there. We were conducting a number of water quality tests, and we're doing that on a daily basis at this point. So that is also where we process tests to send out things that we cannot do in-house. So. We do have the break room and conference space. So this, it doubles as both a conference space and a break room. It's where we conduct some trainings. We have our morning meetings where we're lining out staff on their tasks for the day, do safety trainings, other operations training. You know, if you zoom really, really far in there, you can see some, some great math on what sort of dissolved oxygen we need to feed the bugs. And so we've used some of that space, kind of in a limited fashion, obviously, with the COVID restrictions. But we're starting to get in tune with at least our plant staff, what we can do there, and get some of our other staff moving in that direction. So. Locker rooms. Again, this is something where we, there's still a little bit of work to do. The lockers need to be fashioned to the walls. But again, we, we're progressing. This allows us a lot, a lot more space than we currently had, or we had at the service center. And it's, you know, it's, it's working today, and we continue to work with Janes, our contractor, to finish out some of these things. You can see down in the bottom left corner, there's still some trim, a number of little punch items. And frankly, living in the space for a little bit will help us to work out some of those bugs that exist. So. We have a welding shop and storage. So you, this is where we have tool storage. We store two vehicles that we can kind of move our rapid response out of to either go service a lift station when we get a call out, keep parts within, we call it our sewer van and other things, keep those warm. A lot of times at our current location, we have to store things inside and then move it into a vehicle whenever we have to respond to issues. So that'll be a welcome addition to this, to this, have this space. So. The office space, again, just kind of that comparison all the way on the left to what it looks like this week. You know, it was a skeleton at that point, and now we have some pretty great space. Office spaces to the left, we have some cubicle spaces to the right, copy space, storage, and other things. So that's really coming along. And I actually moved into this space on Friday at about 4:30. And I wrestled with IT infrastructure, so as everybody does whenever they move. The public restroom on the exterior of the building. So again, you can see that picture on the left from June, and you see how it is finishing out on November 12th. So those two restrooms will be publicly accessible. They do not have access in, to the inside of the building. And we are working with Parks and Rec on, you know, maintaining and cleaning schedules, and hopefully we'll be getting those open. I would hope by the end of the month, if not a couple weeks into December. They are heated, so they can serve as year-round restrooms as we move ahead. So.
All right. Can I ask a question?
Surely.
So actually, I have two questions. Is there a drinking fountain or water supply there for people who are using the trail? And are the bathrooms handicap accessible?
Yes, on both counts, Mayor Protem Baxter. So you can see kind of in, in the small picture, you can see there are two fountains that are available, also a water bottle filling station at that location. They, they are the winterized kind, so you push the button, you hold it for a good five or six seconds, and then it will turn on. And the, the restrooms are ADA accessible. And in order to get gray, you have to wind kind of down and then back up the ramp, but those are accessible, I believe. So. And I just wanted to put there, there is going to be, the picture to the right is a picture of some public art that was purchased for the project. It was purchased years back, and that is actually set to be installed probably in the next two weeks. So. The Vactor Garage. So again, it, it, it is in progress. There's still a few more things to do, some glass, some roofing is ongoing, because that is the last building to be roofed. And so in the next few weeks, I think we'll be storing trucks in that space and alleviating some space constraints we have at the service center, allowing the streets crew and potentially transit operators to have a little bit more space to, to store a few more vehicles. So. And the budget. So as of today, we can see on that left-hand column, the contracts we have. So the original contract for design with Dewberry Consultants, the Janes Construction Contract, change orders one through seven, with number two being the big one. That was the change order that included the Vactor Garage into the project. And then we see the other services, which some of those are accurate, such as the OPEA cost. A few of those still have some estimates just on furnishings. As we mentioned, we're working with Mountain Studies to get a couple of their water quality interpretations put into the space, a few excavation items. There's a water quality pond that we still have to go. They will be moving, you know, at this point in the year, they don't want to install a lot of the, a lot of landscaping items. So they're going to be holding off on installation of the landscaping items until next spring. So that's where a few of those items are being held. And if you look at the CIP budget, there are dollars represented on the carry-forward CIP section for these values. So. And then to the right, we have project expenses to date. So that, this is, you know, just a tale of the tape for invoices that we have paid thus far. And based on those invoices compared to the total, we are 86% complete or a little hair over. And on project timeline, we're at about 93%.
So, David, excuse me, I have a question about that, too. I, I thought that the Administration Building was estimated to be $8.1 million. And it looks like it's going to be over that, even if you discount the large change order?
And I believe it was 8.1 was the appropriated amount in the 2019 budget, Counselor, or Mayor Protem Baxter. And as we had discussed, I think I had emailed all of council a few months back, you know, during 2019, there was a movement of funds from other projects into this project of, I think, $700,000 or so. And so that was to build the additional space and the contingency to complete the project. And then, so that, that's where we are today. You know, obviously, on the right, you can see, we are over that 8.1 today, but that does include the Vactor Garage. You know, we, we do plan on, we do intend to save wherever we can. We don't think we're going to use the, the entirety of the remaining Dewberry contract. And also, you know, Janes is looking to, you know, kind of just finish up. So I don't think that they have a lot of work left, but we'll be proceeding with that work.
So the money that was taken from their projects to go into this project, I don't recall, but was that appropriated by council, that, that change?
No, those, those were transferred by the previous city manager.
Okay, so, all right. Well, that explains actually why then it's over the 8.1, because obviously if things had been appropriated, that 8.1 would have increased. But it's, it's challenging when we tell the public that something's going to cost us $8.1 million. And I understand this large change order, so I'm taking that into account, too, that it still is significantly beyond what we had originally understood. And then since council did not have a chance to appropriate the dollars into it, it, it doesn't make it very clear and transparent.
This is Mayor Broke. And I, I mean, obviously, the 8.3 million is what the contract bid price was when it came in after it was competitively bid. So the 8.1 was an estimate and an amount that was anticipated. Reality strikes, and you have a contract, a low bid that came in at 8.3. So, you know, there was no surprise at the time that contract was issued to the public or council that, that, that those additional funds were needed to be transferred in.
I'm not talking about $200,000, Dean. That's the difference between those two numbers. I'm talking much more significantly than that.
Right. For the benefit, you know, we talked at, at some length about the addition of having enough money in there for to accomplish the, the Vactor Garage, which is about a million dollars. And there was some hesitancy to do that. And I hope there, you know, to me, it was a good decision to add that additional million dollars in there.
Yes, I agree with you. And I, and I have said several times, not including that. It's, if we take that out of the equation, we're still significant, it's a significantly more expensive building than we had originally discussed. And part of that has to do with the transfer of dollars into that project from other projects that was not appropriated by council, apparently. So I'm just stating the situation the way it is. I'm not. I'm not suggesting anything else, I'm just.
Those, remind me, Jared, where those funds came from? They were from sewer funds, they were not from any other fund. They were transferred in there for, from sewer funds to this particular project.
I understand, but seven hundred thousand dollars being transferred is not open and transparent when it hasn't been discussed and approved by council. That's, that's the challenge. I'm not saying it shouldn't have been, I'm just saying it's not open and transparent in the way it was done.
It was not brought up to a vote of council, but it was certainly discussed in public forum. So I wouldn't want to lead the public to believe that there was anything less than transparent motives in transfer of those funds. So it was, there's, I mean, every penny does not have to be voted on by the city council every time, and this is one of those times. When you have a fund that had available capital that was for that very purpose, it was transferred into that fund. The public was, we, we discussed it as a council, and that was a decision that was made by.
I disagree with you. Money is appropriated, then if it's not used, it has to go back into the fund and be re-appropriated. I, operationally, I do believe that you can move money around within the department as a city manager, but I do not believe that with capital projects, that that is the appropriate way to be doing things. And I think our Gatsby would speak to that.
And I'll just add that I believe our draft CIP policy statement, which we do soon need to adopt, addresses that, that the funds need to come back and sets a cap on how much can actually be moved within a fund. So I just want to point out that that policy should address this, and we do as a council probably need to revisit that and adopt it eventually.
And what is that cap? Do you, do you recall, Councilor Noseworthy?
You know, I think the proposal was for fifty thousand, and I also asked the question. I wanted to make certain you couldn't get within a department, you couldn't get fifty thousand here and fifty and fifty and fifty, all of a sudden add up to seven hundred thousand to support your favorite project. So I believe the city manager is probably looking at that and will be bringing it back to us eventually.
Excellent. Well, Jared, what else do we have?
Yeah, are you finished?
I, I think that was it. My, my next slide only said, "Questions, please," or.
Well, there you go. That was a big one, right off the top. So thanks for, for that statement more than a question. But I, I do feel it's important to, for the public to know it was not, there was no, nothing less than transparent. You can argue where, if that was the right method of appropriation, but it was certainly done in full view of transparency. So any other questions for Jared while he's here? If not, we'll move on to the next topic on our agenda.
Thank you very much, Jared, I appreciate it. So the next topic is five point four, National Accreditation of the Parks and Recreation Department.
Good evening, Mayor Brookie and members of city council. I come to with good news about the Durango Parks and Recreation Department being re-accredited in 2020 by the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies and the National Recreation and Park Association. Out of twenty-three thousand Parks and Recreation Agencies in the country, only one hundred and eighty-six, which is less than one percent, have earned this distinction. Initial accreditation of the department occurred in 2015 with a formal re-accreditation requirement every five years. Why, why did we receive national accreditation? In 2012, following the receipt of the National Gold Medal Award for Excellence in the Field of Parks and Recreation Management, which is the most prestigious award given to an agency in the country with a population of thirty thousand, the department decided it should be accredited. Accreditation acknowledges the department's overall quality of operation, management and service to the community. It acknowledges that the department has met rigorous standards related to the management and administration of lands, facilities, resources, programs, safety and services. Overall, there are one hundred and fifty-one recognized standards. In summary, accreditation illustrates the extraordinary dedication and services provided by the Parks and Recreation Department to the community and holds the department to the highest national standards. That's all I have for you this evening, unless you have any questions.
That's awesome, and again, once again, that's a huge, you know, cultural part of our community, is we are a recreation-based economy and a recreation-based population. So thank you so much, Kathy, for, over the years, bringing us to that point. I remember when the rec center opened up and to much public adversity, that we didn't, it was too big. It was that, you know, it was, we don't need that fancy of a facility. And now it's one of our, you know, the most used facility in the city of Durango. And, and it's brought to us a whole nother health consciousness, much less recreation awareness in our, in our community. So that's just the hub of all the programs that you have brought to us over the, over the years. So thank you very much, and excellent job.
Yeah, it's, it's wonderful that the community is so supportive of the recreation and allowed us to expand it. And kudos to you and your staff for making it happen and having the quality that it is. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Kathy. And Mayor Protem, we have the next top, topic on the agenda. Thanks. Sorry for this awkwardness, I, my, my agenda is still trying to download itself, so, but Kim's helping me out relentlessly. Thank you so much, I appreciate this.
Next topic is number six, Review of the Consent Agenda.
All right, well, maybe have a reading of the consent agenda, which is a, a list of items that are routine or non-controversial in order, in nature. And we, any counselors that would like to remove a consent agenda item can do so after we read them. And then we will vote on that, hear about that topic and vote on it separately. So Amy, can we have a reading of the consent agenda?
Certainly. Items six point one and six point two are approval of minutes. Six point one, the minutes from the city council study session of October twenty-seventh, 2020. Six point two, the minutes from the city council regular meeting of November second, 2020. Items six point three and six point four are discussion and possible action items. Six point three concerns resolution R.2020-41 regarding an additional appropriation to the general fund for the Rural Economic Development Initiative grant in excess of the amount budgeted in the 2020 budget. Six point four concerns resolution R.2020-42 consenting to and supporting a long-term lease between Fort Lewis College and Animus High School to provide for the construction of a new high school. Items six point five and six point six are requests for public hearings with a proposed date of December one, 2020. Six point five is to consider the 2021 proposed budget and highway user tax fund receipts. Six point six is to consider the 2021 annual appropriation ordinances. Items six point seven and six point eight are final approval of ordinances. Six point seven is ordinance O.2020-15 amending Division One, Article Six of Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango to amend and create procedures regarding the receipt of complaints and other actions on violations related to municipal campaign finance matters and declaring an effective date. And six point eight, ordinance O.2020-16 amending Chapter Twenty-seven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango, the Land Use and Development Code, by the amendment and addition of portions of tables and sections of two dash one dash three dash three and two dash two dash three dash four of the code governing vacation rentals and declaring an effective date.
Excellent, is there any member of council that would like to remove an item on the consent agenda this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove item six point four, please.
Item six point four, which is an item between FLC and Animus High School?
Correct.
All right. Any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? All right. Well, let's see, let's, if, if, if none, let's.
Yeah, we want to vote.
Yeah, vote on the remaining items, everything but six point four on the consent agenda. And may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus six point four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, may we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Brookie?
Yes, and with that, we'll have a little discussion about six point four. And in short, it's a discussion about a long-term lease between FLC and Animus High School. And Counselor Youssef, would you like to ask, ask a question? Or what, what were you trying to ascertain?
I just wanted to pull this out to highlight this, because I think it's really important for our community. I wanted to thank our community residents for their support of ballot measure four A, the ninety million dollar bond, to support our schools, improve our faci, school facilities, and build new schools and address school security. And this in particular, I wanted to pull this because this is a great example of the collaboration and cooperation we're seeing between our schools. And it really makes for some wonderful arrangements. In this case, higher education, Fort Lewis College, working with Animus High School to bring their school up to the campus. And I just think it's really important that we kind of now and then take a moment to some, address some of the positives that are happening in our community, and this is definitely one of them. In this instance, stronger schools make for a stronger community. This is supporting educational choice in our community, and I just love to see it happening. So I wanted to pull that out.
Excellent, thank you, Melissa. Any other discussion about, about this particular, this particular item? Do we know where the site is, actually, Melissa? Do you know anything?
I do. Yeah, it's, it's, it's difficult to kind of explain, but it's, you know, where the soccer field is, the new soccer fields. If you co kind of like tandem to that, it's back, back tucked in there. And so, yeah, and so what we're doing here is approving some, a right-of-way, a passage to allow it to happen. So anything that we can do to promote and support these type of relationships is a, a good thing.
Excellent, excellent. And what, what a two great educational facilities to, to have a merger like that and a shared population and resources. It's great. Well, thank you so much. Any other, any other discussion on that topic? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass six point four.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, maybe we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor, Mayor Brookie?
Yes, thank you so much. And with that, Kim.
Mayor, before, you know what, I, I need to actually do one more thing. I'm sorry, Mayor, before we go on to the next item. I received a text from a resident who simply wants to go on the record. They could not get online, they were having technical problems. And so if I could, if possible, it just very quickly, I'd like to, can we just, can I add a note for the record? For public participation, since this individual was seeing, having technical difficulties, it will be quick. Is that okay with council?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is from a resident by the name of Karen Pontius. Her address is two eight eight Animus View Drive in Durango. And she wanted to go on the record echoing the comment of Miss Sweetie Marbury regarding the mask mandate. And she would like us to see us extend the boundary with city limits and even go so far as to look at taking away business licenses, licenses, et cetera. And so she just wanted that on the record, so I wanted to read that in for her, if we could add that back, please.
Absolutely, so that'll be added to the public comment. Now, that actually is an agenda item forthcoming here, so if Karen's out there listening in, stay tuned. And, and, and appreciate that comment. With that, next item on the agenda?
Next item is number nine, public hearings. And so there's usually, is there something you read before we go into the actual detail of it, Dean?
No, I think we can dispense with that for the evening, for the moment, yeah.
So we have nine, there's no, no legislative and policy hearing, related hearings. And nine point two is our quasi-judicial hearings. And we have nine point two point one, which is a public hearing regarding the sixteen Coalbank Drive preliminary minor subdivision.
Excellent, may we have a staff report, please?
Kevin?
Do we have planning staff? Not going to wait in, there he is, yeah.
Well.
I thought I'm the only person to have technical difficulties tonight, so I have no, no excuses, but Kevin, you're, you're, you're technical.
Good evening, councilors. Not exactly sure what happened here, I wasn't intending to present through the staff report, I'm happy to do so. So if you could just bear with me for a moment, and I'll get down to nine point two one.
Good evening, city council members, I am here. Thank you.
Thank you, Savannah.
Thank you. So this is a preliminary minor subdivision for sixteen Coalbank Drive. As you can see here on the map, this is a pre-existing duplex, and it is in a row of duplexes that have already been subdivided. So this is one of the few duplexes that have not been divided into separate ownerships. And so that is what they would like to do, is take this one ownership parcel and divide it into two, so it can be two ownerships. And this is the existing, it's, it's fairly straightforward. As I mentioned, it's one parcel, one ownership. And they would like to divide it down the middle of the duplex and make it into two ownerships. So this is a preliminary plat that they are proposing. So when we review preliminary minor subdivisions, we make sure that it is a conforming use. This duplex is a conforming use for this plan development. And we ensure that the structure meets all current building, plumbing, electrical and fire codes, and that master water meters are installed as well. Our engineering staff have reviewed this plat for, to ensure that this is happening. And then I also reviewed the Skyridge Plan Development, which this is a part of. And this agreement does allow subdivisions to be created for separate ownership interests. So those are allowed as well, so it does meet the Plan Development Agreement of Skyridge. The Africa Nation is approval of the sixteen Coalbank Preliminary Minor Subdivision with the finding that the plat meets the evaluation criteria of the Land Use and Development Code and is subject to the following conditions. Include all plat language, plat notes and easement dedications determined appropriate by city staff on the final plat. All written, verbal and graphic representations of the applicant shall be deemed conditions of approval. All comments provided by city staff shall be addressed prior to recordation of the plat and authorize the mayor to execute the mylar's upon completion of all final plating requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Savannah, appreciate it. Any, any initial comments, questions of Savannah by council? If not, I'll open the public hearing and have any, be able to chime in. And again, use the raise hand function if you're on Zoom. And, and Mitchell will invite you into, into the meeting for public comment. If you are calling in, I believe it's star nine. Yeah, star nine to raise your hand, and the moderator will let you in via your phone number. So thanks. And Mitchell, I'll ask if there's anybody interested in talking about this particular subdivision this evening?
Thank you, Mayor, we, we still have quite a few attendees with us tonight, but no one has raised their hand yet to speak to this agenda item. So if you are here to, to speak to the Coalbank Preliminary Minor Subdivision, please utilize the raise hand function now. And like the mayor said, if you called in using your telephone, you can press star nine. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and have further discussion amongst counsel. Any questions of Savannah relative to this fairly simple subdivision? If not, I have one question, which is, most of these, I don't recall actually approving subdivisions of most of those parcels up there, as you illustrated. In this, so this one was just, never got platted that way originally. I think most of those houses have been built as duplexes as opposed to being further subdivided once they were built. But this one seemed to be a catch-up kind of issue.
Yes, I think a lot of them were platted already as duplex separate ownerships. Because you're right, they didn't come in later. They were done originally. So this one's just plain catch-up, like you said.
All right, very good. And it is consistent with the, not only the subdivision plan, but also allowable within our regulations as well. So thank you for that. If there's no other, there's no staff, there's no applicant presentation this evening. Is there anybody in the audience that's an applicant that would like to speak to it? If not, then we'll just move forward and entertain a motion.
Mayor, we did have someone raise their hand. Hold on a second.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Mitchell.
Heather, I have permitted you to speak. Can you introduce yourself, give us your address for the record?
Hi, counsel. My name's Heather Murray. My address is 864 East College Drive here in Durango. I am the granddaughter of the owner of this parcel, and I'm assisting her with pushing through the paperwork to get this subdivided. They, you know, she would like to, my grandfather passed away earlier this year, and she would like to subdivide in the assistance of dividing out her estate as she is thinking towards the future and dividing things to the family members. So this house was, Willis duplex was designed by my father and the owner's son 20 years ago with the intent, it would always be subdivided. And it was never going to take 20 years to do it, but, you know, here we are. So I just wanted to say that it was always designed and intended to be divided like the other ones on the street.
Excellent, Heather. I appreciate it and good to hear from you. The, with that, do we have a motion? I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed preliminary minor subdivision creating the potential for separate residential ownership interests in the two residential units in the duplex located at 16 Coalbank Drive. And with the finding that the proposal complies with the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code per presented testimony, submitted documentation, and conditions outlined in the staff report, as well as authorizing the mayor to execute the mylar's upon completion of all final plating requirements.
I'll second that.
Excellent. It's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Birkin?
Yes, thank you so much. Next item on the agenda, please?
The next item on the agenda is 9.2.2, a public hearing regarding the Riverview Heights, sorry, Riverview Heights Lot 3A Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Rezoning, Parcel 566-520-409032.
Excellent. I'm dying to see this one.
You're reading all these every time now, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah. This is a piece of cake. I love it. I like this. It's great. Staff presentation, please.
Okay, so this is a comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning. For this lot, 485 here, I don't know if, some of you might remember this came to, I think, 2017, when this came in as a subdivision from the Island Cove Mobile Home Park, which is all down here. This used to be all one lot. And it was a couple lots, and they reconfigured it into this upper bench. So this sits quite a bit higher than the Mobile Home Park. It's more in line with these residential homes over here, sitting up on that bench, with access taken along here. There is also trail access as well, which you can see actually right here on this aerial. So that's the lot that we're referencing, is this one right here with the 485 for the future land use map amendment and the rezoning. So this is, when it was subdivided, it was, the future land use was given as residential medium because the intention of the applicant was to put in three townhomes. And so that's what they wanted to do. They kind of saw it as a bridge between this single-family EN5C over here, and then the residential medium and the residential high of the Mobile Home Park. They are now considering making it more just a single-family home in line with the adjacent properties also up here on the bench. So they would like to change the comprehensive plan, future land use map to residential low, which would allow that single-family home, and then to rezone it into EN5C in alignment with the properties that it sits near. This is just a conceptual plan, just showing what it would look like. Nothing is being reviewed at this time. They would need to come in for a site plan review once they do come up with something that they would like to propose. This was just so that we had an understanding of where it would sit and where it would be on the property. So this is conceptual. And as you can see, like I said, it's really high up above the Mobile Home Park. So for comprehensive plan map amendments and rezonings, we want to ensure that it was compatible with existing and planned land uses on the adjacent properties. As mentioned, it sits closer to single-family homes, so this is more in alignment with the single-family homes than a townhome would. They will provide adequate public facilities and utilities and services. That will be reviewed during the site plan review, once they do have a proposal for a single-family home. And we ensure that there's adequate supply of land, that they can build a home there, that we aren't just creating an unbuildable lot. And they definitely can with this proposed land use and rezoning. Staff has reviewed this. They have the recommendation of approval and that we found that the proposal meets the applicable criteria of the Land Use and Development Code and recommend approval of the comprehensive plan, future land use amendment and rezoning subject to stated findings and the following conditions. All written, verbal, and graphic representations of the applicant shall be deemed conditions of approval, and all comments provided by city staff shall be addressed. I wanted to mention also that the Planning Commission had the additional condition that the trail access not be closed for longer than two days, if possible, during construction. The applicants have worked extensively with Scott McLean of Durango Parks and Rec to establish a construction plan for the trail use. And both of them have determined that it would be better to have the trail closed for a long period of time just once, rather than a series of two-day closures, which might cause confusion for the users of the trail. So they have been working on that and coming up with a plan for the trail closure when needed, when that construction happens. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Savannah. If we can, any questions for Savannah at this point in time or before we open the public hearing? If not, I will open the public hearing. And again, Mitchell, if you have anybody that is raising their hand or if anybody's out there that wants to speak to this issue, please raise your hand on the Zoom function, and we will allow you to speak in this public hearing. Or if you're on the phone, dial star nine.
Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand.
We just can't stir up enough controversy tonight, yet. I say yet. So that's, with that, I'll close the public hearing and entertain any other thoughts regarding this proposal for Savannah. Savannah, I might ask if the applicant isn't available this evening or if they have anything to say?
I believe the applicant was here in attendance.
We usually allow the applicant to say anything, but they might want to just answer specific questions of counsel if any.
Marcus in the attendees list.
Okay. All right. It's not mandatory, so if there's any questions of Savannah, let's, we have Mitchell?
Yeah, Mayor, someone did raise their hand. Elizabeth Boone, it is your turn to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your full name and your address for the record.
Hello, this is Elizabeth, 1140 Main Avenue. I'm with Reynolds Ash, and I'm representing the applicant. And I just wanted to clarify a statement made by Savannah and mention that the Parks and Rec, in their coordination, had requested that we have as few closures as possible, even if their duration is over two days. And that was just a correction to Savannah's comment, which was one closure.
Okay, that brings up the topic of, you know, how does that, that's a public trail that actually traverses the property, and is there an easement for that?
There is. It's a 12-foot easement.
Right.
They haven't crossed that property.
Okay. Very good.
I'll just mention that I use that trail all the time. And there are certain times of the year when it's more conducive than less conducive. So I personally see how it could be challenging to do the construction and have the trail be open. But I also, as a citizen, would appreciate being able to access it. So just my two cents worth.
Excellent, excellent. Let's see, I was trying to think of, what it is, is, you know, I feel like it's a significant betterment than what we saw in 2017. I think being right on the backsides of the predominantly single-family neighborhood was a little bit of a stretch, even though it was couched as a transition from single-family to the Mobile Home Court. It was certainly topographically more challenging for the existing neighborhood, single-family neighborhood that was there. So I appreciate the applicant's desire to back off and create a nice home that's more compatible with neighborhood, in my belief. So with that, if there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion. But I see Counselor Baxter, Mayor Pro Baxter.
I'd be happy to make a motion, but I just wanted to be in the interest of openness and transparency. I believe that I was on the Planning Commission at the time, that the previous project was approved and brought forward, and that doesn't impact my ability to make a decision tonight, but I just wanted to make that clear to everybody. So with that, I would make a motion, move to recommend approval for the Box Car Landing Conceptual Plan Development with the finding that the proposal complies with the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code and Durango Comprehensive Plan, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report and discussed at this public hearing. Do you want me to do the other recommendation part, too? More specific about the lot number and everything?
I think that's not, I think that's a record, so we can just, that's sufficient for a motion? And do I hear a motion?
Second.
Second, yes, sir.
This is, did you make the motion for the box car landing?
Yeah, isn't that what this one is?
This is the Riverview Heights lot.
Riverview Heights.
Thank you, Melissa.
Sorry, I was a little confused there. I had to, I was wondering if I was, yeah. This is, I was scrolling too, going, hmm.
Me too. This was fair.
So I'll make another motion. We'll forget that one. To approve the Riverview Heights Lot 3A, see, that's where the lot number came in, right? Parcel 566-520-409032, Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Map Amendment and Rezoning, subject to findings and conditions as stated in the October 26, 2020 Planning Commission staff report, with the added condition that, to the greatest extent possible, the trail shall remain open during construction. In the event, the trail must be closed temporarily. The applicant will inform the city and coordinate with Parks and Recreation Department staff on closures and detours. And then the last part of the sentence is, and any enclosure should not extend more than two days. Should that remain in my motion or not?
Absolutely. That sounds great.
There we go.
A very complete motion.
That's what the, oh, sorry. That's what the Parks and Rec and the applicant worked on and decided that it would possibly be longer than two days at certain points.
Okay, so I amend my emotion to say, and any closure, if possible, should not extend more than two days.
I'll amend my second to that.
But it's better than backing up. It's not a rescinded, it's an amendment. So that's, we're making progress here. And any further discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call. Roll call, please, Amy. Thank you.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Birkin?
Yes, thank you so much. And Mayor Pro Tim Baxter, is there box cars in our future, or what's the next item?
There are. And this is 9.2.3, a public hearing regarding the Box Car Landing Conceptual Development Plan, 3801 Main Avenue.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Rookie and city council. And this is the real Box Car Landing Public Hearing. And let me see if I can share my screen. I'm Mark Williams from the Community Development Department. And hopefully everyone can see that. So it might take a few seconds for the first slide to turn. There we go. So before we jump into the hearing on Box Car Landing, since this is the biggest housing public hearing that we'll have this year, we wanted to throw in just a few slides real quickly about how this relates to our housing plan. And, because this is an important piece of our housing plan. So this checks a lot of those boxes. The first one, increase affordable housing options for all residents. And the second one, create market-friendly policies and regulatory changes. This is the kind of project that we like to see because it, more inventory helps more affordable housing in Durango. And I hope everyone can see this. It might be slightly cut off. On the bottom, there's a lot of numbers up here, but we can walk through these quickly. So this lets you know how we've been doing recently. Obviously, this year 2020 is a very strange outlier when it comes to housing construction, but we're still doing okay. Forty-seven single-family homes and duplexes have been permitted. And we also have permits for what we consider multifamily, although technically, it's, a lot of those units, 48, were from what was the Travelodge, which has now been converted to Aspen Village Apartments on the north part of Main Avenue. It's a prototype probably for how to approach doing these projects in the future. And we have a few more of those in the pipeline possibly. And that's a good way to provide relatively inexpensive housing that doesn't require the big outlays that new construction does. So as you can see, however, 2020 does not measure up to the average of the last five years before this, or really the 10 years before this either. We are getting more affordable housing units. We've done pretty well for that, actually, since the housing plan was written. It was adopted in January 2018. We've had Lumia in Phase 2, the VOA Senior Housing Project. Sparrow Transitional Housing is going to be coming online, hopefully, pretty soon. And then a few deed restricted units in the Mountain Trace Town Homes. So we've gone from 435 units to 567. And that doesn't include any homes that were purchased with Fair Share Fund. So if you did a different accounting measure, we'd have more than that as well. But as I said earlier, this is a real outlier of a year. And our single-family home prices have always been going up. They may be going up more now. I think everyone's pretty familiar with the appeal of Durango as a so-called Zoom town, as people move here from bigger cities and the coasts in Texas for various reasons. Just year over year, from September to September, single-family home prices were up 9%. Now, the median home price is $550,000. The townhouse and condo, those are measured together. They did not go up quite as much year over year, but they're still, you know, fairly expensive. They increased about 5%. And since the housing prices and the housing market bottomed out right after the Great Recession in 2012, 2013. And since the housing prices and the housing market bottomed out right after the Great Recession in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, our single family home prices are up sixty seven percent, and the townhouses and condos are seventy nine percent. This trend hasn't escaped the rental market either. In the last ten years, rents have gone up fifty nine percent from about eight hundred and twenty dollars a month in two thousand ten to thirteen hundred and thirty dollars last year. There used to be a biannual state report on housing vacancy rates and median rental costs. They've cut back on that in the last few years, and so now we only get an update once a year, and that's for the third quarter. And it's the fourth quarter now, but the third quarter number hasn't come out yet, so we don't know what that will be. But one indication that rents, or this aligns with rents going up, is that the vacancy rate has declined from three point seven percent in twenty eighteen to one point four percent last year. So five percent vacancy rate is considered functionally a full vacant or, you know, a healthy vacancy rate. When you get below that, prices will go up. So as much as we've been building recently with projects like the Rocket Point Apartments and some other projects in Three Springs, we still have more to do. Which brings us to Boxcar Landing. This is the location. It's a seven, just under seven point one acres on Main Avenue. Just to the left and below that is the Hampton Inn. Then that building that's surrounded on three sides by the green blob is the CDOT Building. This site used to be the site of the community hospital, which was demolished some time ago. The applicant is Tracy Reynolds from Reynolds Ash, and he's seeking approval for one hundred and thirty two units plus six thousand square feet of commercial space. And those hundred and thirty two units would be a mix of townhomes, condominiums, and apartments. The review process for this is a plan development review process. Right now, we're at the first step, the conceptual review process. So at this stage, we don't do our detailed engineering or site planning documents, although there are some fairly detailed site planning documents that Mr. Reynolds has provided, so he's sort of working ahead, and we'll look at those in a few minutes. But really, at this stage of the process, we're looking at the major components and do they work? And specifically for this site, we're talking about access, density, rockfall from Animus Mountain, the water treatment concept and parking. This is the first time the council would see this project. If you approve it tonight, it would come back for the preliminary review for at least one more public hearing. This is in a mixed use zone. It's mixed use arterial and the future land use is that pink color, which is mixed use, but you can see it's surrounded by, to the left is Mercy Housing Project, which is medium density housing and across Main and Animus View Drive is high density. The density that's allowed in the mixed use zone is comparable to what's allowed in the high density residential, which is capped at twenty four units an acre. What they're requesting is eighteen point seven units per acre. So this is a site plan of the project, and I can walk you through this. To the top of the screen, that's where Animus Mountain is, and those units on that side are the townhouses. Each one of those would have a two car garage plus a driveway for some of them to have additional parking. In the middle, that largest building is the main apartment building, although to the right of it, which is also light gray, is another apartment building. And then on the sort of the bottom and right is the condominiums, and that's closest to Main Avenue. And then you can see the access, the the primary access drive on the bottom left, and on the left side of that is the commercial spaces, and there are a handful of apartments above the commercial spaces. One of the big issues is to make sure that the grades here for the access drives meet city standards. Right now, they're, they max out at about twelve percent. They would have to be no more than ten percent to meet city standards, and as they get closer to the intersection, they can be no more than five percent, and that's so that cars don't slide into the intersection. So it has to be less steep than elsewhere. And as Counselor Baxter mentioned earlier, she was on Planning Commission. I think she was talking about this project, forgive me, I don't remember if you reviewed this as part of Planning Commission, but this did come to Planning Commission in a different form last year, and council, I'm sorry, Planning Commission voted against it. But it's helpful to have a little background on that. At that time, the project consisted of three buildings, a commercial building that was the same size, plus two apartment buildings, and they were both pretty large and needed significant height variances. And that was the main reason that the Planning Commission denied the project was concerned about the visual impact of the mass and the height of those buildings. So the owner took that to heart and redesigned the project. The largest building, as you can see, is the apartment building right in the middle, but it's it's not as large as either of the previous ones. And probably more significantly, it's not nearly as tall. The height limit for this project would be forty feet. And almost all of these buildings are under forty feet, although there are small portions that are over forty feet up to about forty three, and those are for shed roofs, the tops of some shed roofs that slant upwards a little bit and a little bit of the the top of some of the wall plates. However, our Commercial Use Design Guidelines allow a height, more height, up to ten feet more for a residential building if parking is provided underneath, and those structures that are a little bit over forty feet also have parking underneath. So there's no variance needed for any height increase according to our, the codes we've had in place for quite some time. So we're not reviewing or reviewing, but we're not approving the site plan or the building designs tonight, but here's what we would be looking at if they come back and presumably they'll look something a lot like this. Here are the the shed roofs that I was talking about. And I guess you could call this style Colorado Contemporary. It should be pretty similar in style to a lot of the new construction on Main Avenue, such as the New Zia's Building, or even across the street where there are a couple of smaller office buildings. So the apartment buildings, these are the condominium buildings that are closer to Main Avenue with the parking underneath. And then also on the bottom of this page, the townhouses with the parking underneath. And then when you turn into the building, on the left, there's the mixed use building that I mentioned, so six thousand square feet of commercial space, mixed use arterial zone allows a wide variety of parking, I'm sorry, of different uses, so offices or some type of retail space with the apartments above. One of the things we always like to see is snow storage, so the blue areas on here are where the snow will be stored. That's an important consideration when you have a lot of surface area that needs to be paved, which they will. And then, so also, let's take a look at the main access. So if you are coming in off Main Avenue and you come up the entrance drive, the CDOT Building is over here. CDOT has an access easement. Whatever the final configuration of the access is to CDOT Building, CDOT will have to agree to it. It may change from what we presently see, and some of that might have to do with the parking onsite can probably be reduced. And if it is, I think we would want to concentrate reducing parking where there's parking on two sides of this access drive. So I don't think that this is the the final configuration of how that access is going to be granted. And so when I talk about reducing the parking, you may be aware that the planning department has been looking at our residential multifamily parking standards. And we we have some new standards that we're going to advance at some point, probably. Next year, we've gone to the code alignment group already. And that really has to do with the fact that we, as a city, have some highest multifamily parking standards anywhere. We looked at a at twenty different peer cities that were either college towns or Colorado towns, mountain towns, et cetera. And more than ninety percent of the time, our parking standards were the highest. So for studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms, we're we're cutting those across the board to be comparable with what almost all other communities have, and our new standards wouldn't be more restrictive than anyone else's. They would be comparable to what other cities have by and large. And these are parking standards that we have approved through special parking studies. We did that for the Rocket Point Apartments in twenty seventeen, I believe. Also for Lumion. And then, when this was before Planning Commission last year, it's the North Main Apartments, they also performed a parking study, and the applicant, Tracy Reynolds, will perform a parking study here as well to make sure that whatever final parking requirement we're going to require is going to be adequate. You know, the one thing that we want to make sure we do right here is there's no other parking available. You obviously cannot park on Main Avenue. There is a Mercy Housing Project off to the left, which is pretty long, so you know, if there's not enough room to park here, people are going to have to walk a long way, so we'll take a careful look at that and and park what's appropriate. The North Main Apartments in twenty nineteen had a traffic study performed. That study used a basis of a hundred and sixty apartments for its recommendations. So that's fairly comparable to what we have now, even though we have twenty eight fewer units, and even that number may change, may go down. The townhouse units are going to be larger than a lot of those apartment units, so the the projections are, should be pretty consistent, but they'll do an updated traffic study as well. And we don't expect that any major changes are are going to happen between the old study and the new study. Really, the big finding from that twenty nineteen traffic study was that a dedicated left turn out of the apartments would be required. So in other words, as you're coming out and you come to the intersection with Main Avenue, there would be a a left turn signal that the applicant would need to install and for people turning left, but that would also benefit cars turning right where the majority of the traffic is going to go because that right turning movement will be protected. And it'll give people, it'll give more time for traffic to flow out of the Boxcar Landing site. So I mentioned at the beginning, the rockfall. This is a big issue. You may remember early in the previous decade, a large boulder fell down Animus Mountain. It bounced over the rockfall barrier that was at the Mercy Housing Project and crashed into one of the units down there. So after that, Mercy Housing installed a much earlier barrier, something we like to call the Jurassic Park Fence, which is similar, if not exactly, like this photograph. It's it's got to be strong enough to protect the units from any rocks crashing through. It also has to be tall enough because the rock that hit Mercy Housing actually bounced over the fence. So these are about twice as tall as the previous barriers. And the applicant hired a local firm Geo, Trattner Geotechnical to do a study of the mountainside to identify which rocks were most likely to fall, and that study, they identified certain rocks which will be secured into place. And this is a really specialized type of study, so the city wasn't really qualified to evaluate that study, so we referred it to the State of Colorado Geotechnical Survey. They reviewed it and gave it back to us with, they identified a couple of additional rocks that would need to be secured in place. And doing all of that is obviously going to be a condition approval for the project. You may be familiar with, at the southern end of this site, there is an informal parking area for people who use the X-Rock Climbing Area. Probably the main X-Rock parking area is actually north of city, I'm sorry, CDOT. But there's an additional informal trail on the south end of this project, and we want to make sure that parking is still going to be available for those people, and that trail will be kept open. So that's going to be a condition of approval. We discussed the snow storage. And importantly, there's an existing transit stop already on Main Avenue right at the entrance into this property. So if we're talking about reducing parking, it's nice to have a transit stop already in place and available to be used. If this project gets approved tonight at the conceptual phase, then the applicant would come back with much more detailed plans at the next phase. And that includes a lighting plan. We want to make sure that any exterior lights are dark skies compliant. There's got to be a landscaping plan. There are some mature large trees up there that will probably have to go, and we have a tree replacement schedule in our code. So for example, if a tree of a certain diameter gets cut down, they have to replace it with two trees or three trees, depends on the size. We'll get more detail on an updated traffic study. And one of the things that was discussed at Planning Commission, which has now changed, is the applicant was going to initially have some surface stormwater gardens for water, stormwater detention and treatment. And then subterranean vaults where the bulk of the water treatment would occur. They've since changed their plans. The city does allow these vaults to happen. It's an approved use in our Stormwater Master Plan. But it it does place more of a burden on the city in the long term because we have to, once those are built and turned over to the city as part of our public utility system, it's up to us to maintain it. So it's probably a good thing for us that they're going to switch to water treatment on the surface, and those are plans that we'll see at the next stage. They'll need to provide some open space and play areas for the residents. There is a a schedule in our code on how much in terms of square footage, the play, how big the play areas have to be. I think it's about sixty three hundred square feet. They could have two. The minimum size of of one of these facilities is three thousand square feet, so we'll see that as well. And also, this is going to be subject to fair share. Not the apartments, but the condominiums and the townhomes because, you know, it's going to be a lot more than four, which is our minimum to trigger fair share. So there should be a substantial mandatory contribution to our fair share fund from this project. At the preliminary phase, we'll dial in what that contribution is going to be because it's based on bedroom count, and we want to make sure that we get the accurate number of units and and bedroom sizes before doing a fair share proposal. We got a couple of public comments. We actually had one from Claudia Anici and one from Jim Williams, I believe they're married, and they live in the Pioneer Park neighborhood across Main Avenue. They have sent an email expressing their concern of how hard it already is to turn left out of Thirty Seventh Street onto Main Avenue during the morning rush hour. So Main Avenue is actually Highway five fifty. It's a US highway that is maintained by CDOT. We'll have to work with CDOT to see if you know, this development would trigger or warrant any type of other improvement. I think that CDOT will want to look at the traffic that is carried through here as a whole, and there are no traffic signals between around Thirty Eighth or where Animus View is down to Thirty Second Street. And then the other public comment we got was from the owner of the Hampton Inn who had two different concerns. One is that during really intense rainstorms, not most rainstorms, but it does happen occasionally, water draining off of Animus Mountain gets channeled underneath the existing parking lot above the Hampton Inn and then down into an existing green space. And it tops the the curb occasionally and leaves some debris in his parking lot, so. And then down into an existing green space and it tops the uh, the curb occasionally and leaves some debris in his parking lot, so mud or. You know, what it rocks or or um, tree branches and he has to clean that out, so. He would like the um, designer to address that, and so we'll definitely take a look at that. And then also, uh, there's some concerns about homeless or abandoned vehicles. In that parking lot above Hampton Inn. The city's Code Enforcement Division is, which is Steve Barkley now, has talked to um, the owner of. The Boxcar Landing Site and it's. There is uh, one van that's been abandoned with. Well, not abandoned, but possibly a homeless person living there and there also are cars from the Mercy Housing uh, project. That uh, can use that park or do use that parking space, but there is no homeless camp and. Uh, apparently no tow company is willing to tow the uh, the van with possible. Person in there, if there is a person in there, so that's something um, we'll have to work out. And obviously, if this project gets approved, that that should become a moot point. So I've got some selected conditions. Uh, these are all in the staff report. I'll just go through these quickly and I didn't include some of our our typical and standard ones, but as I mentioned. The maximum density would be eighteen points seven units per acre. Uh, it's important to implement the findings from that rockfall mitigation study and the state's findings as well. We'll keep the X-Rock access trail open and provide parking. CDOT will have uh, unfettered access to their building at all times during construction and then uh, after construction as well. See, I will have to issue an access permit for this project and. It is possible that the developer may need to phase this project. If that is the case, we'll figure that out at the preliminary plan. Vesting for this type of project is good for three years. The way that would work is after the preliminary plan, we do a final plan at the staff level. And if that is, I'll just throw out it, we'll say if that's approved July twenty twenty-one. They're vested through July twenty twenty-four. If they don't think that's soon enough to um, get everything done, then we'll um. We'll take a look at that and and put that in their PD plan as well. We are going to take this to the Design Review Board for their review. We wanted to take this to Planning Commission and City Council first to make sure. That uh, council is okay with the general concept and we'll take this to the DRB and look at the um. The design details of the structures. And then any onsite retaining walls, because there is a substantial slope, goes down about seventy feet from. The high point down to the low point by Main Avenue, so there will be some retaining walls and. Um, those retaining walls will need to be designed by uh, Colorado PE with a specialty in structural engineering. So it is a recommendation of the city manager that the city council by motion approve the Boxcar Landing Conceptual Development Plan. And direct the applicant to prepare the preliminary development plan for review with all conditions as listed in the staff report and adopted during the public hearing process.
Thank you, Mark. Uh. Thanks for that presentation. Uh, initial question, I just was wondering uh, what what the uh. The vote of Planning Commission was on this issue?
It was, it was unanimous. I think it was five to nothing. I think they were all there.
Okay, great, great. With that, uh, any council, uh, any council questions for uh, staff before we open a public hearing? Hearing none, uh.
Sorry, I just did. I I I'm sorry.
Melissa, yeah.
Sorry, I was raising my hand, but I'm sure you couldn't see me. I just, I was just curious on the parking, um, in reducing the parking, possibly. Um, Mark, um, I appreciate that we're considering, you know, looking at some parking amendments and I. I'm hoping we'll have those conversations when we look at our strategic planning and. Think about the visioning for the future of Durango, but I did want to follow up and ask in this case. Have we seen any parking problems at the Rocket? Have we experienced any of those if we're using that as a comparison?
Um, thank you. That's a good question and we actually know that we have not had any parking problems there. Um, one of our community development employees actually lives there now and so he's our our source. But uh, according to him, there there are always. Uh, empty parking spots and I think they're fully leased. So there's always somewhere to park.
That's helpful. Thank you. That's my only question.
I did have one thing I wanted to mention, just to clarify this. Um, I actually was not on the planning commission during this original proposal. Nor the previous proposal. The uh, the previous agenda item was the one that I, planning commission for the. First incarnation of it, so I have nothing, I've never seen this.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Thanks, Kim. I I I I kind of anticipated that as well, yeah. Uh, with if there's, uh, we'll have further discussion, but uh, perhaps it's time to open a public hearing. Uh, I will do so, open the public hearing and see if there's members of the public that would like to weigh in on this uh, particular project. And uh, you can do so by uh, raising your hand in Zoom or. Uh, star nine, if you are entering on the phone.
Uh, Mayor, do you have somebody here?
Excellent.
T. Reynolds, you, it is your turn to speak. Uh, please give us your full name and address for the record. Unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Okay, uh, this is Tracy Reynolds, eleven forty Main Avenue. Can you hear me okay?
Love it, Tracy, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I don't have much to add. I think Mark did a really comprehensive job with the staff report and I appreciate that. Um, I was just going to explain where the name Boxcar Landing came from. Um, at X-Rock, there's a number of rock formations and one of those is called Boxcar. And I loved it and thought that was great, so let's call this project Boxcar Landing. Um, as far as the the issues that the Hampton Inn brought up, um, the the current property owner did contact me and. You know, it's Durango and it's a constant battle with people being where they shouldn't be. And he's doing his best to address that. Really has nothing to do with this project. I just wanted to throw that out. And um, I think that's about all I have to say. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Um, while he's on.
No questions. Comment, is a comment okay?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, Melissa, go ahead.
Uh, Tracy, I just wanted to um, make a comment. Thank you for working um, this property. Um, and you know, on this go around and um. The opportunity to address housing in Durango here is um, one I'm very interested in exploring further, so I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. A hundred and thirty-two units possibly could make a dent, so I wanted to thank you for some of that, providing some supply possibly.
And I also wanted to acknowledge a much improved design and to acknowledge the developer for. Staying with it and trying to find something that he can get past, he or she can get past on a five unanimous vote.
I support, I I think that the idea of adding housing into our community is uh. Something we absolutely need to do, so I'm glad you're doing this, Tracy. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Uh, Mitchell, do we have any other app, uh, folks in the, for public testimony?
We, no one else has raised their hand. We still have quite a few uh, attendees in the list. Uh, if you are here to speak to this. Specific agenda item, please utilize the raise hand function now and if you called in and would like to speak, please press star nine.
All right.
I've not seen anybody else.
Very good. Thanks so much for checking. Uh, with that, uh, I will close the public hearing and uh, ask for any other comments from council. Uh, questions of staff or any discussion. Hearing none. Uh, from that, I have a couple of questions uh, for Mark. Uh. The uh, number one, uh, you know, the. On a hillside property like that, the most informative piece of documentation, of course, is a section, and so I just uh. Trying to get a handle on the grade coming up from the highway. Up that first stretch, the which is uh, has units immediately associated with it. On that incline coming up, what the, what's the primary, the grade of the primary access? Then uh, number two question is uh, uh, I see these long horizontal traverses uh. And but what is the primary secondary egress? Is that part of the uh, through CDOT property down somewhere else, but we go. South and north, but I don't see any connectivity there. Um. And then, uh, so let's start with those two.
Okay, yeah, I should have mentioned that the obviously Main Avenue is the main point of access. There's an access easement which already exists that goes through the Mercy Housing Project. It's not really suitable to use that as a everyday access because um, you know, it's a residential. Project, it's not designed as a street, so uh, we have proposed putting in an emergency access gate on the border, so. In case there is an emergency, um, EFPV can use it or um. Uh, you know, if they need to get out, they can use it, but. Um, and then a planning commission that came up and. Believe it was Commissioner Yelore that wanted to make sure that bicycles and anyone walking would have space to get around that gate, so we'll make sure that happens also. And then as for the great is, as for the great issue. Right at the intersection, it's maximum five percent and then after that, I I believe it does go up to ten percent. Right after that.
Wow, okay. Uh, and you answered my question on the on the south end, the secondary egress on the south end, but we got all those dead end parking laterals that go northward. Two in two locations, what, how do, where do they exit? Or. Or is it just a turnaround?
Site plan, um. I'm not sure I understand your question. I'm talking about.
The the upper terrace goes towards the CDOT building and dead ends?
Yes.
And then the uh, the the mid-level terrace also dead ends at the north end? And there's a somewhat.
There's no access north from the CDOT building. The only access for CDOT is to come south into Main Avenue. Um, and I think I'll have to refer that. I'm not sure, I don't remember. It looks like here that doesn't loop around, but I thought maybe it did, so I actually. I'm not sure if it loops around on the north side and maybe Tracy can answer that question.
And and if there, if that's the case, how many units can we build on a dead end cold, uh, get dead, a dead end private drive like that? You know, that's. It's, it's a lot of units to be one way in, one way out. Uh, you're on mute, Mark. Oh, okay, you're counting, sorry. I'll be when I count too, so it's okay.
So it looks like there are twenty units. If it's less than five hundred feet, that's allowed by code without a loop.
Right.
Or allowed if there's a another emergency access. So Tracy, are you still here?
I'm I'm here. Yeah, I would just add that um, so there are two access points to the CDOT property and um. We would not anticipate that these would be gated off, so for fire truck emergency access. You could go through the upper access, loop around CDOT, come back around and next begin. Um, the two exit points are of course onto Main Avenue and also through the Mercy um, Mercy Housing. Um, through the gate that Martin mentioned, so there are two emergency exit points. Otherwise, it's just a big loop. And. I throw out one other, one other thing. Um, CDOT is interested at in looking at other locations. According to the current property owner, there has been some discussion. Um, so they may not be there forever and that CDOT property could potentially be redeveloped for additional housing. And so there is, there is some potential discussion about that.
Thank you, Tracy. That's helpful. That's helpful and then maybe we can, uh, in the in the future plans, we can articulate how those uh. Uh, how that loop uh, actually works and define the the area of the. Firetruck turnaround, which is on that second tier, that first terrace, the lower terrace, I guess. Looks like that, that works well, but um, yeah, and and just to be clear. That loop that you've described still comes back down to that ten percent grade that drops down to Main Avenue, right? That's still, uh, the only other secondary egress back down to the highway is on uh, through uh, the Mercy Housing Project.
That's correct, yeah.
At uh, heading south. There's no other connection to Main Avenue. North of the single entry that you point, point of entry that you have. So you've got a hundred and thirty-six units coming in and going out of one. One point of intersection at at. Uh, at uh, on Main Avenue.
Yeah, there is no other access point to the north. There's a significant grade change, which I'm sure you've probably all seen.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, in the, so then Mark, uh. The other question I have at conceptual design stage, if you could just uh, remind us what we are approving and we are approving at this stage. Anticipating, seeing preliminary designs phase with a lot more of the uh. Engineering aspects worked out and this is conceptual, clearly. Uh, but we established the allowable density, we established the uh, allowable land uses and lastly, we established the access points. So by this, by uh, by. Making uh, a motion on this today, we are allowing a hundred and thirty plus units be. As I just said, having one single point of access in and out of this entire project. Uh, correct. And and that carries forward. We are conceptually approving that. And uh, just. Yeah, uh, I was just going to compare that to uh, Rocket Drive-In, for instance, it's got at least two. At points of access, a big U uh, that come out onto um. Dominguez Drive, whatever that is there. Uh, but uh, just for my counselors to to relate to a little bit. Uh, and that also is not at nine percent grade, so.
How many units are in the Rocket Apartments?
Rocket Apartments, yeah.
How many? How many?
Uh, two, uh, about a hundred and eight, about a hundred and ninety, I think is the last count is uh. Close to two hundred, so more than this, more than this for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
And and I have a question, just um, Mark or Tracy. Um, Tracy, are you representing a developer? Or are you the architect and the developer for this project?
Tracy, you're still there? We opened it, scare you off here.
Sorry, I was talking to one and I was muted. Um, so it's a little bit complicated. I am the architect and the developer, but we are going to be bringing in other developers on this project. It's a. Very, very large project, too large for me. And um, we're getting close to having a deal with a co-developer who would be working with me on this project. And so the landowner probably, the current landowner will probably not be involved with this project from this point forward.
Thank you for that clarification.
Excellent, and uh, I'm I'm sure conceptual development. Approval is, uh, it would be helpful in pulling the partners together on this, on this project to move it forward, so. So we we under, we said, we we appreciate it, that. Uh, the uh. Um, any further discussion, council?
Oh, it might be interesting to know because Dean, you brought it up and I think it's a good question. Do we have other subdivisions where uh, a. Large number of people empty out onto the main road or or only have one ingress and egress um, capable?
Well, um, we do. I don't know if we have any other apartment complexes like that, but. Um, probably, possibly before we had some of our current standards, places like Sky Ridge and Hillcrest and Rock Ridge. Have one main um, access point with emergency access also.
So do we, do we see any challenges with this, with that, with this concept?
Well, in terms of um. At peak hour, that traffic using the intersection, the traffic study didn't have, identify that uh. It would be a problem. The horizon of that study went through twenty forty-one. which makes me think it was done back in 2016. And that was for the 160 apartment units. And the city has levels of service for our different classifications of roads that we don't like to see that level of service dip beneath. So level of service is how fast is the traffic flow? How long do you have to wait to make a turn? Those types of things. And the intersection did not go below the level of service for the primary arterial, which is what Main Avenue is.
Yeah, I wasn't really thinking about it that way. I kind of wonder if Dean might have been on my track too, which has to do with safety. Like if there's a fire there and you have everyone in those 132 units trying to get out the same road. That was more my concern.
Well, yeah, go ahead, Tracy. I think that was Tracy.
I think that was me probably, but.
Well, we do have an emergency, a secondary access, so there would be two points of if there was a, you know, a wildfire that came down Animus Mountain, there would be two different roads that people could use.
Okay, all right, that's good.
I think, you know, my 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 safety concern is really the 10% grade for that population. I can't think, you know, although we might have one way in, one way out for Sky Ridge, it's not 10% grade. It's not optimal, nor would it be. It does have a secondary egress at the end, but at the same time, it's the struggle here is going to be that population at a 10% grade, I think, is really something to think about. And hopefully, there's a design solution that can be advanced that that mitigates that to some extent.
Something that we'll take a look at.
Well, yeah, it otherwise we're gonna end up with a bunch of. I mean, that's that brings me back to the affordability part, too, is when you think of all the kinds of vehicles that might be coming out of an affordable housing project that that may not have Blizzacks every day, you know, on their for the snow tires that come down there, you know, is it a safety issue? And what is the affordability commitment? We talked a little bit about that. It's my last question, which is it's a fair share program. The thing that we lack in 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 our community now is by any binding commitments to affordable housing. I mean, everybody says it's going to be affordable, 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 and it rarely turns out to be truly affordable in our community. So that's my it's my little bandwagon about, you know, what are, you know, projects like VOA, they have a program. Obviously, it's a tax credit qualified project that has a commitment to be affordable for long term and affordable to certain metrics. When we when we see a private developer coming in and saying it's gonna be affordable, you know, I think we need to understand what kind of commitment there is and what percentage this is exactly going to be. And Mark, you talked about it. That's to be figured out in the future, but I'd certainly, as this comes back, want to see a binding commitment of some sort for truly affordable housing to some metric and or deed restriction or and and Tracy's done this before successfully. So I'm happy that there may be a mechanism there to make that happen. I hope it happens and is presented clearly in the next presentation, so.
I just wanted I just wanted to add, Dean, that I believe we have had council discussion about whether or not the appropriateness of continuing the in lieu of buyout option. And so I want to make certain that that's been a topic of discussion and hasn't reached any resolution.
It's my biggest regret, the author of the in lieu fee in Durango, Colorado. I wish it never had been implemented, quite honestly. And it is my biggest regret, I have to say. So thank you for that.
Can I jump back in here?
Sure, sure, Tracy.
We are not representing this as affordable housing. I'm kind of confused where that came from. We certainly will comply with the fair share, but nobody has called this affordable housing project. Yeah, so I'm I'm kind of caught off guard by that, actually. And as far as the fair share, I I certainly have a lot of opinions about the in lieu of fee, but that's what the city regulations are and we will absolutely comply. As far as the 10% grade, that meets code. And it's certainly way lower grade than a lot of existing conditions in town, which are certainly problematic is when when we have bad weather. But the the roads, the private driveways will all be maintained privately by the HOA, the overall HOA for this whole development. And, you know, access in and out where we hit that 10%. And I think that 10% is a very, very short stretch, actually. The current drive going in is about 12%. It's all going to be redone so that we meet city code. We're not asking for any variances. You know, and I I think it's going to be very functional. HOA will take care of snow and weather and anything like that. So I don't see that as an issue at all.
Thank you, Tracy. Tracy, I just have one question. And if in the consideration of the considerations we gave to Rocket Rocket Townhomes, for example, for parking reduction primarily, that was based on their ability to serve, you know, an affordable segment of our granted their apartments, but that served a housing need for affordability in our community. And you're saying these are not in any way going to be affordable, except to the extent of the fair share program?
Yeah, I'm saying they don't meet the definition of affordable housing. They're not subsidized. There's not going to be any kind of rent limits or anything like that. These the rental units are going to be set at market value. The for sale units will be set at market value, other than whatever is determined for the fair share units, whether that's the in lieu fee or whether that's some actual reduced price fair share units. And that is yet to be determined. I don't think a parking study has anything to do, whether it's affordable or market rate. Absolutely doesn't have anything to do with that.
No, that's a concession.
You can't say that affordable housing has a lower parking requirement than market rate.
I Tracy, I didn't represent that at all. I'm sorry if I did. What my statement was, the city of Durango can give a reduction in parking for projects that serve the benefit of affordable housing in our community. That's the primary benefit, not.
City code allows a parking reduction based on a parking study. Doesn't have anything to do with affordability. I think you're kind of going off track here.
I think I was just gonna add too, sorry, Mayor, that, well, you know, just if we could recall at the beginning of this presentation, we were kind of looking at affordable housing units. And so maybe that's where some of this conversation started. But also, I would like to suggest that what I brought up was in my recognition of the need for housing, it was just purely from the economic standpoint that if you add 132 units to a supply, that will make an impact on, hopefully, ultimately, over some time of potentially even market rates. So I just wanted to clarify that if I caused any of that confusion.
Well, I would also say that I think that the the concept of the Rocket Apartments was that same concept, Melissa, that I agree with you that there would be more housing on the market, so therefore there wouldn't be pressure on the rents. Now, whether or not we're doing that fast enough is really the question, right? So I agree with you, the more housing possible, then the less pressure on upward prices.
Yeah, and I I just wanted to clarify that the VRVO short term rental changes that we've made would apply so that this would have limited short term rental possibilities.
This is a planned development, and as counsel, you have the discretionary authority to to make that a condition of approval if you choose to. With some developments, we placed a limit based on percentage of the units, one or 2%. Or with Reiler Park, there's 32 units, I think, and the cap is two units. So.
That one got retracted.
Certainly something you can do.
Sorry, Tracy.
Sorry. The one next to Reiler Park, the the proposal got retracted, so that'll have to be redone.
Right.
This is a conversation, I think, for the future, yes, when we get to the next stage.
Right, I was just gonna ask Mark when the appropriate analysis of that kind of thinking would be or any application of limits for short term rental housing on a project such as this, is that a preliminary design stage, would you say?
Probably. Yeah, I mean, I it's not in the code if it has to be now or it can be later, but you know, the number of units might change and the layout may might change. And so assigning a limit might be better weighting, you know.
No, I think that's that's totally appropriate. We don't, you know, really know what the ultimate yield on this project might be, so let's. But that's.
May I make a? Is it a right time motion?
Hey, Kim, I would totally entertain a motion. Thank you.
All right. I would move to recommend approval of the Boxcar Landing conceptual plan development with the finding that the proposal complies with the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code and Durango Comprehensive Plan, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report and discussed at this public meeting. And I hope that wasn't too much deja vu for all of you.
We it's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please? Oh, any further discussion prior to the roll call?
I do believe it's important. I do believe it's important to note the discussion that took place, particularly at the end with regard to short term rentals.
And affordability, yeah, exactly. All right, maybe we have a roll call, please, Amy. Thank you.
Counselor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Yusuf?
Yes.
Mayor Broke.
Yes, thank you so much. Mark, did you have a final statement or?
Have a good night.
I also just wanted to thank Mark, really great presentation that was very helpful, really thorough. So thank you, Mark.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim, we have a next agenda item, yeah.
Yes, agenda item is 10 and City Attorney, and we have 10.1 Draft Policy Review Regarding Proposed Changes to the City of Durango's Open Records Request Policy.
Yes.
Excellent. Dirk, go, take it away.
Yeah, good evening. This is an item that's been in the works for a while. Staff has been working on, excuse me, proposed amendments to the open records policy draft was done. I think in September, it was made available to the public. A number of comments were received. The comments were compiled by the clerk's office and those comments were attached to the agenda doc that you have tonight. Yeah, and the staff has prepared responses to those comments and have made changes to the draft policy based on the comments that were received. There's no action required tonight. We put it on so that you could see it, you could review it. Also, to increase the visibility for the public to see it, review it, possibly submit some additional comments. And then we will bring it back to counsel, at least the plan is to bring it back to counsel for final approval at the next meeting. I would note, if you look through the comments and the responses from staff, I think most of the comments have been addressed, other than those, and there are a number of these regarding fees and requests from the public that the fees either be completely eliminated or reduced or, you know, waivers, you know, granted, that sort of thing. So there have not been any changes made by staff to date on any fees. It's really the position of staff and the recommendation of staff that the fees actually, as shown, remain the same, they're essentially the same fees that have been in place under the prior version of or the existing version of the core policy. I think, again, it'll be up to counsel to determine whether or not you want to make adjustments to fees. So there's really no additional action at this point. We would encourage and welcome any additional comments from the public. And then again, we will be we'll plan to bring back a final version of a draft of this policy to you next meeting.
Excellent, Dirk, thank you very much. So in summary, no action this evening, but just an announcement for general public to weigh in if there's any further comment on this topic.
Right, and it will also be an opportunity for council members, if you want to, at this point, to provide any input guidance that would influence the final version that would be brought back. Of course, it could be changed at that point as well. But if you have any comments now, we'll certainly take note of those and incorporate those into the draft.
I might note, this is a discussion item this evening, not a public hearing, so I won't open a public hearing and take testimony this evening. But I certainly encourage members of the public to weigh in on that. And and just for the record, where can we find this for the public to take a look at this on our website, perhaps, or?
It's on the website. It has been for quite some time, yeah.
Durango.
I just have a question if the the people who did write in with concerns about the fees, will anyone from the city clerk's office be reaching out and sending them, here's the revised statements?
They.
A little more proactive rather than just expecting them to go to the website.
I I know Amy's on the, you know, on she can comment on whether or not those have been specifically spent sent to the people who made comments or not. If not, we'll follow up and do that.
Exactly, we'll follow up.
Okay.
Any any further comment? I saw.
I just want to say that's a great example of customer service. Thank you. I appreciate that extra mile.
Amber, did you have, were you planning on weighing in or I saw you popped in here, so thanks. I might, you know, it's city council has been copied recently on all the public records requests. And so I'm finding it curious, the variety of requests that are being made and the veracity with the, you know, the number of requests. And it is a it's a big job for government to to find the diversity, find all the documents, some new, some old, some non-existent, but still requested. So it's it's a very difficult job. And as we make public records more and more available via our quest for transparency, it just becomes a, you know, what I would suggest is becoming very quickly a full time job for a staff member of city council. So it that when we look at fees, I look at it in that light of ultimately having to staff this position to respond to the public's interest in in a transparent government, so.
And the numbers are increasing and it's not just that's not just Durango's experience. You know, other municipalities are experiencing increases in the number of requests. And it is interesting, the variety of requests that we get. So and and there is, it certainly has been a serious discussion about how to make documents more publicly available so that we don't actually have to search for them. We will allow people to do their own search. But as you can imagine, there's a massive number of documents that would have to be converted. That in of itself would be a major chore. But certainly, that's been a topic of continued discussion about how to make things more available to the public in general.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion or questions for Dirk at this point? So look forward to carrying that item forward. So with that, Mayor Pro Tim, do we have another topic for this evening?
We do. So this would be section 11, Introduction of Ordinances, and it's agenda item number 11.1, An Emergency Ordinance of the City of Durango Establishing a Mandatory Mask Zone in the City Requiring Masks in the Designated Area Due to the Increasing Impacts of the COVID-19 Pandemic Emergency and Declaring an Effective Date. And before we start discussing this, I, like Melissa, also had a local person write in saying that they couldn't get on. So they'd like me to read their very short public comment, if that's okay.
That's very appropriate.
And I may pronounce Marty's last name incorrectly, Gorbajos, Gorbijas, Gorbajos, I'm not certain. He lives at 110 Engine Creek Trail. His comment was, I was also challenged getting into Zoom, an enthusiastic third to expanding the mask requirement and suspending business licenses for noncompliance. To do otherwise is to prolong the duration of COVID's effects, shake consumer confidence. Shake consumer confidence as numbers continue to climb and further erode the viability of Durango's businesses. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you, Kim, uh, for reading that into the record. Uh. Uh, Dirk, are you want to start this off or who's uh, who's going to present? Amber, do you have a? Do, well, first I should ask, do we have overarching news about uh, other issues uh, in the relative to? Health mandates uh, coming from the state that might give this perspective?
And I will defer to the City Manager for that. I also think that uh, he has a PowerPoint presentation, so. Um, perhaps we'll go through that and then we can answer questions specific to the ordinance as drafted.
Yes, absolutely. And you have a PowerPoint presentation that uh. It will help with myself, Dirk, as well as Chief, uh, to kind of go over a little bit of just kind of giving a history of where we are. Uh, some enforcement mechanisms that have been talked about. And just kind of provide some information with the council and opportunity to answer some questions and kind of. Where our thought process was with the mandatory mask zone uh, as a possible option. So Mitchell, if you wouldn't mind bringing up the uh, PowerPoint. Go ahead and go to the next slide, Mitchell. So as I say, in the overview, kind of the first part of this is, you know, why are we here today? And the uh, reason that we are here today, uh, it was that at the very, at the end of the council meeting on November second. Uh, the City Council directed the count, the staff to bring an ordinance that would allow the city to enforce wearing a mask. Uh, so with that type of uh, type of uh, direction that we were given, uh, we began to get meets together, uh, myself, Chief and Dirk. On kind of what are some options that we could look at? Um, so what we're having in this presentation is a background of what we're able to enforce today. Some of the criteria that we looked at uh, when considering an ordinance that we'd like to propose to the council. Uh, specifically of what we could enforce efficiently with the resources that we have. Where can we affect the most change with the most people and where has shown to be the most successful in other parts of the state? So we did take a look at some different angles and some different approaches. Uh, as we were considering placing the mandatory mask zone ordinance as possible option for the council to consider. And we also did reach out for feedback to the Health District, uh, to bid, to uh, the the county. And then also to the Chamber of Commerce and talking a little bit about the mask zone ordinance. And then we'll give him. Some of the feedback that we received. And then also we'll kind of uh, plug in Amber here at the end to kind of give a little bit. Of an update of kind of what's changed since uh, this presentation even went out and kind of where we are today. So currently, uh, here's kind of what is currently enforceable and uh, this next two slides I'll take. But if Dirk, if there's any questions, if you could help, I appreciate it. Uh, but right now we do have an order, the Governor's Order, that orders uh, anybody who's over ten years old to wear covering. Uh, with their noses and mouths that over covers their nose and mouths. When entering or moving within a public indoor space, uh, when waiting to use public buses, light rail, or nonpersonal taxis, car savers. Car services, ride shares and transportation services. Right now, uh, the governance enforcement orders because of our ordinance, um, was uh, allowed to expire. Uh, what is enforceable with the Governor's Orders is by uh, the county or under Colorado law, public health agencies have the authority to administer and enforce an order. Uh, the Public Health um, Director uh, can ask the County Attorney or the uh, District Attorney to pursue. A violation of uh, of the Governor's Orders and can look to immediately uh, go to court to see if they can get immediate compliance with an order. We also have trespassing uh, is an option that the city can use. If someone refuses to wear a mask and the business asks them to leave, uh, the Durango Police Department can respond and issue a citation on criminal trespass citations. And Chief will be talking a little bit about that further on, on some of the areas that we can assist as well. Next slide, please. It is a partnership and working together. We all have different tools in our toolbox, if you will, of things that we can enforce. Uh, you have the San Juan Basin Public Health District that is on the communicable diseases. Public information, uh, food service licenses, prevention, education and enforcement. The City of Durango, we do do public information, police assistance, business licenses and liquor licenses. And the La Plata County does the prosecution of violations as requested right now, uh, as by San Juan Basin Public Health under the Governor's Orders. And as well as doing public information. Next slide, Mitchell. So here's one of the things that uh, to put some education out there of the public that uh, is always talked about it that we've been hearing more. And more recently is about business licenses and how does that process work? Currently in the ordinance, there's three different reasons, uh, there are three main reasons that we can cause for suspension and revocation of a business license. Uh, the first one is a constitute of a breach of peace or a menace to the health, safety and general welfare of the public. Second is a conviction of any violation of federal, state or municipal law. And third is repeated violations of one or more city ordinances at the licenses place of business by the licensee or patrons of the business. Currently, at this time, the city has not received notification of any business creating an imminent public health risk. Uh, because we don't have that, there's not a ability on the health side uh, to pull a business license at this moment. Also, the process is not immediate. Uh, there's usually about at the very minimum, probably twelve days before a license can be suspended. Uh, the business is entitled to due process, to have seven days of written notice. And a hearing in which the business is entitled to be represented by legal counsel. And can reasonably cross examine witnesses against the business and present witnesses on their behalf. And then businesses can peel the, can appeal the decision within five days to the City Council under the same hearing provisions as the hearing with the City Manager. So with this, I'd like to just kind of put in, uh, Dirk, if there's any uh, things that you'd like to point out with the process uh, for the council, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I I think this is a pretty uh, basic breakdown of the of the process. Just to be clear, there are some other grounds for viol, for. Uh, revoking a business license, but business licenses are typically used for taxation and administration purposes and rarely. For, you know, punishing um, a business for failing to comply uh, with orders, particularly orders that are not. Uh, directly enforceable by the city. So as um, you know, Jose mentioned, currently, you know, we don't have any direct. Enforcement authority as to the Governor's Orders or to uh, health orders. So it makes the process um, somewhat. Well, makes the process very difficult. I would emphasize that, um, you know, there were suggestions that we should do a summary or an immediate suspension. Of a business license, again, based on the code that we've had in place in the City of Durango for many, many years. And also just to support the general constitutional principles. That a business license does constitute a property interest, it would have to be um, full compliance with due process before there could be any. Uh, sort of uh, action against that uh, license. Um, I, just to be clear, I've also checked, I've I've done some diligence checking around the state. Other than the city and county of Denver, uh, I couldn't find any other municipality that has actually. Uh, taken action to revoke a business license on those grounds.
Uh, could I just ask Dirk a question? Um, and I've been asked this by the public. If a business were selling to a minor, alcohol to a minor.
Uh.
Or selling too much alcohol to a patron. Would we have the same, following the same due process and um. Would it be as um, onerous to revoke a license for something that's a public health issue?
That's a good question. And actually, what we're talking about here in this particular section is. Business licenses, which should just allow any business to operate in the city. Liquor licenses are a little bit different because we are the local licensing authority uh, for uh, issuing a liquor license in the city. Of course, the state also uh, so sort of this joint process, we, the state approves a license and. We as a local entity have to approve the license before uh, it can go into effect. Um, under liquor licensing, the state has actually adopted a rule. That provides that the violation of a. A Governor's Order or Executive Order or a health order related to COVID uh, can be treated as a violation of the liquor code. But it does still require a due process. Hearing to do that. So typically, the way that would proceed is a notice to show cause would be issued. And then the LLA, uh, who, you know, the council has appointed to be the local licensing authority. Would have the ability to hear uh, that violation and could indeed uh, do a revocation. So. You know, in your example of serving underage or over serving, uh, in those instances, we could indeed. Uh, hold the hearing and revoke typically. Um, you know, there are typically, there's, it's not a revocation, it would be more of a suspension or a fine. Uh, particularly unless there's repeat offenses. Uh, but it would allow for, again, so just to be clear, liquor licenses are treated differently. The lines of uh, what can be used as a ground for a suspension or other revocation. Are clearer in liquor licenses than they are in business licenses. Hopefully, that was a long.
That that's very helpful. And I and I think it's important for the public to hear the distinction. Thank you.
I did also want to um, highlight maybe a little bit. You mentioned. The city and county of Denver, and I believe they are essentially one and the same.
They are a county. Yes, they are.
Right. And so they have all the county uh, powers that we lack. And so for them to do something doesn't mean that we can necessarily do it either at this point in time.
That's right. The city and county of Denver, they actually operate their own health, uh, they they have their own health department. Uh, so they are a different animal than the than we are.
And they are their own county. Yeah.
And they are.
Yeah. So then the enforcement piece of that is immediately available to them. Uh, Dirk, I have one question. And and I'm sorry, uh. Kim, did uh, did you have another question or did I, I didn't mean to interrupt, but uh?
Oh, you didn't. That's fine, Dean.
Okay. Uh, the first bullet that you you've got there, it causes for suspension or revocation. I mean, if I'm. Not being an attorney for first and foremost, uh, but if I read this as a, as I would as a fabulous citizen, and I am. Uh, the conduct of, it's a reason for revocation will be the conduct, conduct of business in an unlawful manner. Or in such a manner as to constitute a breach of the peace, uh. Or to constitute a menace to the health, safety or general welfare of the public. And I think that's what a. Number of the folks that are that uh, have have emailed us or called us or in any way communicated with us, uh, you know, saying. You know, there's some situations in our community, uh, there's big ones and small ones, uh, that are definitely. Uh, in violation of the of the mask ordinance as well as distancing and and other things. But um. In general, uh, that's a pretty broad spectrum right there, that the health, safety and welfare uh, is. Seems like motherhood and apple pie when you want to uh, consider a broad scope of. Uh, noncompliances that would uh, be reason for suspension or revocation based on that paragraph. Or that that line.
And but but that actually cuts both ways. And you start thinking about what what happened in a, you know, a hearing process. Uh, prove those kinds of things. And, you know, I'll I'll be bluntly honest, a lot of times when people complain. Or come forward and make a complaint about a business, um, it's difficult then to uh, have them uh, be willing to show up and testify, for instance. And so uh, the chief can chime in here as well. But. So based on the fact that we, that the city does not have any direct authority to enforce a health order or a Governor's Order. Um, I think that, uh, you know, part of the reason why uh, having an ordinance of our own that's enforceable is then at least we're enforcing. Uh, a provision, in other words, we'll be making a finding that they're violating a law that the city has an opportunity and the power. Uh, to enforce. So certainly a lot of things that would be unlawful. Um, but um, it it's clear, it's a clear case if we have our own. Um, law ordinance regulation to enforce rather than uh, trying to enforce, you know, bringing in action. For breach of a law that we don't have any authority to enforce. Is that, if that makes sense?
That that totally makes sense, Dirk. And and I guess that brings the next question is, do you? Uh, to cut the chase, do you have a a a. Uh, an ordinance that uh, would give us that capability or?
Well.
Or are you here to propose one to us?
Oh, I mean, there's one that's proposed and uh, yeah, that was actually loaded, uh, this this as part of the presentation. So, yeah, there there is an ordinance that's proposed. Um, that would indeed, and it's not citywide, as and we'll we'll get into those details.
Excellent.
Uh, I think maybe if Jose could run through the rest of this. But yes, that's the sort of one of the purposes of. Uh, the proposal is that then the city would have uh, the ability to enforce, you know, some, you know, mandatory ma- mask uh, order. Uh, you know, I think as someone mentioned, um, the, there was a previous order. That was entered by the interim City Manager, I think it was back in May, prior to the governor having uh, entered. At that point, it was repealed. The city's one was repealed, uh, in part because. It, you know, we, at that point, didn't think it was necessary. And number two, uh, it was. Our our provisions, because they came first, were a little bit inconsistent with what the governor had done later. So, um, at that point, and again, it was not done as City Council action, that one was done as an interim City Manager, an emergency uh, order. Uh, this, so the the new proposal is quite a bit different, uh, covers different uh, grounds. And uh, we can, again, we can get into the details of those uh, in a bit.
Excellent. Thank you so much. That's Jose. Perhaps we can jump back into the main presentation here.
Absolutely. And I think Dirk kind of, you know, hit the nail on the head with this, is this is really kind of. Walking the council through from coming from November second, when we were asked to put in ordinance together. We begin looking at what were the tools that we have available currently. And then you'll get to the thought process of where the mandatory mask zone came from. So, uh, next slide, please. On this one, uh, the next two slides, I'm going to hand over to uh, Police Chief. Uh, for him to go over, as we know, enforcement uh, for us is usually handled by our police department. They are. Uh, the enforcement portion of our organization. Uh, we do have code enforcement officers. Uh, we do have two. One of them uh, is currently vacant, so we do have one code enforcement officer. But uh, for the majority and the main uh, portion enforcement is done by our police department. So I'll pass it to Chief to talk about his findings while we were looking at gathering the information for this ordinance.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, City Council. So as it pertains to tonight's conversation, I would like to start by providing these two um. Basically pieces of information as they pertain to this conversation. So the first part is our staffing levels. Um, as you all know, our patrol division is comprised of twenty eight officers. And currently, right now, uh, we have fifteen officers that are hundred percent, they're on the street, they're out of training, and they're fully functional. Uh, we also have nine officers that are currently either in the academy, in field training or on FMLA. So with them, they're still contributors, but they're not hundred percent. And then we still have four vacancies that we're trying to fill. And we have a lot of prospects for that, and we're hoping that those are going to be filled very soon. Um, but again, those are going to take several months in order to train to get back up to speed. So with this, we um, we do have some staffing challenges currently as as is. Um, and with uh, just like national levels and state levels across this country, crime rates are up. And they're up for uh, many reasons. And as everybody world knows, the world has changed. And as the world has changed, it's also affected how we're doing law enforcement. And so our crime suppressing efforts right now are being hindered by the fact that um, our our court systems are having a hard time, they're backlog. They're um, they're not prosecuting as many people. Our jails are half the population they currently are. And many of the prisons are also being uh, let down because of the fact that uh, COVID is striking these these places uh, very dramatically. So crimes up and it's it's up pretty dramatically over a four year average. And this is uh, something that we need to be concerned of, and we need to continue to focus on our suppression efforts and what our main focuses are. Is reducing crime and the perception of crime. Um, our officers are doing a really good job out there. Our clearance rates, our arrest rates are surpassing what the state's averages are currently. But at the same time, we don't have any mechanism to build to deal with offenders. So they continue and they go back out into our community and they're reoffending um, on a pretty dramatic rate. Uh, which we're seeing um, on a day to day basis. And you can see it on these uh, initial crime statistics that we have right here. So um, each one of these plays into the next portion of this, what I want to talk about. Uh, which is going to be what other organizations and other cities are doing in response to um, how they're enforcing. Uh, the the Governor's Orders and um, mask requirements across the state. So. Before we move to the next slide, are there any questions in regards to where the Durango Police Department stands at this time?
I'm sorry, for the public, could you go over the Academy FTO and FMLA?
Yeah, absolutely. And it's a great question. So we have four officers that are in the police academy currently right now. They're scheduled to graduate mid-December. Once they get out of that, they are going to have to go through a new hire training, and then they're going to have to go through thirteen weeks approximately. Um, of field training. So they're not going to be in a solo status till about April. Um, field training, currently, right now, we have three off, four officers, I'm sorry, that are um, in field training at this time. And again, that takes anywhere from up to thirteen weeks or so. And each one of those officers is in a different status. Um, and so we have a couple, one that's going to graduate in a couple of weeks, two there at the midpoint, one that's just beginning. And then FMLA, um, one of our officers just recently had a child and she's expected back probably in the next month or so.
And if I missed it, I apologize. So then the fifty four percent is exactly how many officers?
That is uh, fifteen currently, and those are how many we have that are out on the street, a hundred percent working. That is, uh, fifteen currently, and those are how many we have that are out on the street a hundred percent working on a solo status.
And that's to be covered round the clock, those fifteen officers?
Yep. In combination with the ones that are in field training because they're matched up with the officers that are out on the street as well. So that's providing twenty-four seven coverage and that's just our patrol division. That's not including our community programs unit or our detectives or our administrative staff.
And you also have, uh, sorry, chief, but you also have that, a group of the people that are not quite, you know, full officer, but, uh, in between.
Yeah, the police services technicians. And we have two of them. Uh, they typically work day shift and they work, um, um, throughout the week.
And is, um, code enforcement something that they could be focusing on, um, for the next two months or so?
They have been working as part of our, uh, our enforcement group through, uh, collaboration with San Juan Basin Health and the county. Uh, to enforce public health order violations and to investigate those. So they're currently already assigned to that task, uh, as is, as we're speaking now.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And one thing I'd also, uh, be remiss if I didn't talk about, but it's national conversations. Um, that are happening across this country that started this summer and have continued through this fall. So police officers, uh, and the conversation basically is, is. Police officers and what they're doing. And are they focused on law enforcement, which is their traditional job? Or are they working other areas or outside of the scope of what their purview is to be actually doing? And a lot of those things are addiction, homelessness, mental health, um, and are we supposed to be responding to those? Um, and, you know, currently right now, if we're looking at health issues, you know, are we the best tool to go out there and to, to deal with this? And that's why when we were speaking with the city manager and with Dirk, we tried to restrict the zone to basically something that we could have success at. And so it would be a, a, a smaller area within the city where we could, um, actually have a bigger impact and we could hopefully. Build to, through education and, uh, just interactions with our public to get people to come into compliance. We know there's a lot of bigger box stores outside the central business district that, um, are also, um, within the areas of concern. Um, we have gone out and we've spoken with those managers, uh, from those stores and we told them that what we need is their cooperation. We need their cooperation to enforce the governor's intent of, of them wearing masks and their, and their employees and their customers to wear masks. And then that way, if they do have a violation and somebody is not complying with that request, then it becomes a trespassing issue, which is a criminal issue. Um, it's not a health issue, it's a criminal issue. And that is what law enforcement is focused on doing. And that's what we at the Durango Police Department can focus our efforts on. Because if we turn this around and we start making a health issue a criminal issue, as we've done many other things in this country. Then I think we could potentially have some con- confliction out there. And that's my ultimate concern right there. Because we do not want to have a, a mass incident where we, we go out there and we try to enforce, um, a health issue. And it turns into a non-compliance issue, which then turns into a fact of resistance. And we have to overcome that resistance potentially to secure court date or to secure a fine and to take somebody into custody based off of that. And so we don't want to hurt anybody. We don't want anybody, our officers to get hurt or our employees to get hurt. But at the same time, we want to mitigate this. We want to make sure that public health is going to be part of our main focus and our community is health and safe. Out there, but we need, we need to make sure that we're doing this in, in a way, in a mannerism that is going to be balanced and we're not getting outside. Um, of what our authority is. And so if we move to the next slide, Mitchell.
Chief, real quick, if I could just, uh, just say is that, uh, the reaching out to the big boxes was actually done today. Uh, so it wasn't something that, you know, we, we've done it soon and we reached out to them this afternoon. And it'll be something that we continue with the conversation, no matter which way we go, uh, on the ordinance, that we're keeping up that, uh, conversation with them, letting them know. If we are hearing concerns, if we are hearing complaints of the activity going within their, uh, their building, if they could continue to enforce the governor's orders. And if, uh, they have somebody who would not, uh, leave, that they can always call us, uh, and we will go ahead and enforce the trespassing art, trespassing side. So I just wanted to add that portion to it.
Chief, may I just ask eventually, as you think about this for you and the city manager. Is it an option to hire more code enforcement o- officers? Or security office, uh, guard officers in a temporary manner to help us address this enforcement? You may not answer it now, but I wanted to pose that question as we go through this discussion.
Right. And that also speaks to that seven hundred thousand CARES Act money that we discussed earlier. Is how do we or can we use that money to help us with enforcement and, and also encouragement, whatever that looks like of wearing masks? Um, so that's something to discuss later after the presentation.
Definitely.
Yeah, I think those are great ideas because, um, you know, as we've mentioned before, enforcement doesn't always default to law enforcement either. Enforcement can take many different forms, um, in order to, you know, to get that task accomplished. Um, but we did, I did reach out to several agencies, um, that are like to Durango. Um, that have central business districts that are tourist destinations and they're not in the metro area. And the, the strategies that, uh, Breckenridge, Steamboat, Montrose and Grand Junction are all using. Is one, that they're, they're, they're trying to develop partnerships and they do try to educate their community in order to try to get greater compliance. But it's exactly the strategy that the city manager was talking about. And as I was talking about, was we need businesses to be compliant. They need to enforce those rules. Um, at the door. And if they're not getting the compliance from their customers, then they need to call us. And we can deal with it with the laws that are currently already in place. We don't need to create more law. We just need to enforce the laws we currently have. And then any of the businesses that are, that are not in compliance and they're not regulating this, or either through their employees or through their customers. Then they're using, uh, the, the, the section of Colorado revised statutes, twenty-five, one, five, fourteen. And that's requesting that the health department request action through the county attorney or the district attorney to take action upon that business to bring them into compliance. Um, so that we can then partner with them and work the other aspect of it, which is the criminal aspect from our side. Um, and, and that's essentially what they're doing right now. And that would be my suggestion as we move forward as well.
Next slide, Mitchell. So as we kind of looked in and that's kind of what we were talking about of showing the staff's thought process as we were leaving November second and, and moving into these next. Uh, for this ordinance and consideration was what could we enforce effectively with the resources that we have? Um, we looked at a targeted area, uh, where it can be controlled frequently. That's already part of an established patrol area. One of the things that we did and we actually even did talk about was if what if we were to expand this into enforcing citywide. Uh, and that's when we started talking about the resources, that that would be something that would be very extremely challenging for us. Uh, for our police officers to do citywide specifically on what would be the expectation of, of our ability to respond. Uh, what would be the expecta- expectation of our ability to, uh, really be effectively handling that portion of the ordinance now? Uh, again, we looked at it in a, in a two-week picture, right? So it was something to come back with, to give the council something for them to consider. So if there's. Other parts that we want to consider, such as maybe using CARES funding when adding on, uh, some, uh, contracted code enforcement officers, or if that would work or maybe more PSTs. Those are things that we can look at. But again, uh, this was something as we were looking at making sure that we had something for that next council meeting. So this is kind of what our thought process was going through. Uh, where could we affect the most change with the most people? Main Avenue, that's most of where our pedestrian foot traffic is. Uh, and it does include tourists. Uh, we do have a tourist industry that comes through and maybe, you know, we were looking at the people. Who might be from out of state, might not be familiar as much with the mask orders or the mask regulations. So being able to have somebody. Uh, being in that patrolling area and being there, trying to get garner voluntary compliance of letting people know to place on their masks. And then we also looked at what has shown, uh, successful in other parts of the state. Uh, chief had reached out to Breckenridge and they had talked about a ninety-five percent compliance. And that they were getting, you know, that voluntary compliance along with partnerships from the businesses who are, uh, enforcing the governor's orders. So. We were looking at this as, you know, where can the city step in? How can the city help with the health district? How can the city help with the businesses? And we looked at this type of mandatory mask zone as maybe a good place to start. Uh, wasn't a part of where we said this was the encompassing all, the be-all, to be-all for it, but that maybe this was a somewhere where we could start and we could always expand. Uh, if we needed to, but that was the thought process for staff as we were coming up with this ordinance. Next slide, Mitchell.
So question for you, Jose and Dirk also, and probably Chief Brainerd. Um, so it sounds like this ordinance concept that we're talking about is focused on the individual. And not the business. So it's the non-mask wearer and not a challenge to the business.
So there's a little bit of that. Um, it is for the individual, but when we look back at those business licenses. If there is a, um, individual or if there's violations of the ordinances that are happening at that place of business. Uh, that does allow us to have a business component enforcement to it. But you are right, it is right now focused on the individual, but it doesn't mean that the business side. Uh, is not, uh, affected.
Okay. Thank you.
Next slide. So here is the mandatory mask zone, uh, that we had anticipated, just creates a mandatory mask zone. Uh, indoor and outdoor. So while walking around, you still have to wear a mask, even if you're on the sidewalk. Uh, the exceptions would be for eating, drinking or any bona fide health reason. The emphasis would be on voluntary compliance, but it would have teeth to it, if you will. If there is an offense, it's the first offense would be fifty dollars. Uh, if there was no voluntary compliance, second offense, two hundred and fifty, and then third and subsequent offenses would be five hundred dollars each. And would automatically terminate on January fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one unless repealed or extended. Next slide. As I said, we did reach out to bid in the Durango Chamber of Commerce and La Plata County and the San Juan Basin Public Health District. And here's some of the summary of the feedback that we received. Uh, obviously the first one was enforce citywide. Uh, there was a lot of people who were asking about the ability to do so for us to do that and pass that on as feedback. We also had, uh, comments that the spread was, they believed was mainly from parties and in workplaces between employees and customers. Uh, when they're not around and it's not coming from people walking in Main Avenue. Uh, Main Avenue businesses were fearing a mandatory mask zone may drive customers away from the area. And there were the concerns about enforcement at the big box stores. What about Home Depot and Walmart were two of the big box stores that were brought up to us. And then we also had the idea of why don't we work with local business community for a marketing campaign directed at encouraging the community to wear masks and keep families safe and businesses open? And on that one, I've already reached out to Tim Walsworth and they're, uh, beginning to put it together, some marketing, uh, just for that portion at that, at that, as that right now. So. Looking at having those partnerships, but those were the feedback that we were able to receive back from the parties that, uh, had an interest or possibly could be affected. Next slide. So here's where we are. Uh, it was a mandatory mask zone that we wanted to bring back for the council. Uh, kind of meeting the, meeting the criteria of bringing you back something to discuss. Uh, if this is something that would, uh, require modifications or after this would like to discuss or maybe look at different options, we're more than happy to track those down. Uh, this was something that we looked at, taking that direction from council and bringing you something back that we knew we could enforce tomorrow if the council did approve it.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Jose and, uh, and Bob. Uh, uh, my question immediately was, uh, uh. You know, so you've, we've got a table of fines, you know, pretty modest fines, uh, given that are thirty-five miles away. For the same violation, it's a five thousand dollar fine. So those folks are, you know, if, if, if the fine is your. Catalyst for where you go, take your mask off, uh, it's a better deal here in Durango than it is in Farmington, for example. So, uh, what happens when those Farmington people come up here? Is it concerned and fine? And comparatively, rela- related to our fine schedule, but the other thing I don't understand quite is. You know, uh, uh, what? You know, do they get a citation? What is the citation they're given that, that they have to pay a five, of, you know, that, that first, second and third offense fine for? Uh, do we have, um, it's the mask ordinance from the city of Durango? Uh, is that what we're proposing to do? And if so, um, why couldn't that be, you know, I understand the, the, the shortage of police officers, but. Uh, when this situation arises, why couldn't we, uh, issue a citation anywhere throughout our community? I mean, I'd certainly focus on downtown because that's where the highest concentration might be, but per capita or per door. Per capita, per door is at Walmart without question. And, uh, when I go other places in the world. Uh, Denver included, um, there's, there's guards at Walmart and at Target and big box stores that are, you know, that. They've somehow managed to, in their communities, uh, foster a culture of a lot better compliance amongst the big store management. So I know that, uh, Jose, you talked to them today. Uh, what was the, what was the story? What's their problem? Why aren't they enforcing?
Chief, we'll pass that back with the feedback you received.
Sure. So, so I tasked, uh, the commanders and, uh, our community programs unit to go out and to talk to all these stores. And, you know, we, the data that we're receiving through public or our public health portal is over the last, you know, since October first, is we've had, I think. Three complaints at Walmart and, uh, of reported violations. So I'm not saying that it's not happening and there's not people out there that aren't wearing masks. Uh, but talking to the management, they feel that it's almost a viewpoint at times too, because they're not getting any backup. They're not seeing any results. Um, through different efforts. So that's where we're trying to repartner with them, to talk to them, to say, okay, listen, this is what we need you to do. This is what we need your assistance with so that you can let us know. And this has been kind of a, you know, I don't know if it's COVID fatigue or what at this point, but people are tired. And, you know, I think they're just kind of just a little burnt out with this. And if we can re-energize this movement and this message and partner. And work as a, as a community to, to solve this issue, I think we could certainly do it. Um, they just need the support and they just need to be able to do the reporting aspect of it so that we can actually act upon it.
Yeah. Well, in, in that case, you know, that's, that's my, uh, my nexus for having as, uh, a, a larger. Universe of, of, of application of this law as opposed to just the, the, certainly have that downtown mask, uh, zone requirement. But, uh, uh, not limited to that is my, is, is one thought that I'm having currently, but I, I really appreciate that. And I, you know. A Walmart store is a Walmart store. No matter, I go around to other places and it's not, uh, they've managed to, uh. From corporate or from individual management styles, uh, do a, a much better job of, uh, regulating at the door. You know, you don't get in without it, kind of thing. And that's, uh, they started that way at, uh, at Home Depot here, but, uh, immediately. Uh, kind of blew it off. But, uh, so that I'd like to see if we can re- restore that if we need to, as a council, five of us can go. Make a plea for those, uh, those businesses, those large businesses to do that. And then, uh, while you're working downtown with your limited forces to, to help us out with that. But I, I do, uh, uh. You know, I'm, I'm up for any amount of, uh, you know, the size of the ticket is not. You know, I'm not proposing a five thousand dollar fine like New Mexico is doing. Uh, I don't know how many five thousand dollar tickets they've handed out either. In person, but, uh, I think what you propose is, is really reasonable if we can, uh, apply it. More uniformly over the community, I think, to capture a larger audience. Any other thoughts?
I, I do have some thoughts. I'll, I'll comment a little bit on what, uh, the mayor just said. You know, if you look at this, uh, ordinance is drafted, and I understand you may not be able to get where you are. But it is, uh, it's applicable as drafted to both indoors and outdoors. Which is different from the governor's orders and it's very different from the prior mask order that we had. It's, uh, you know, it suggested masks, uh, outdoors when you couldn't socially distance. And then we, and actually our order required them. You couldn't socially distance, but, you know, the, the governor's order is not, is primarily gauged and aimed at indoor. Um, you know, public spaces, restaurants, stores, those sorts of things. This ordinance is drafted would require masks. Of people when they're walking down the sidewalk in the zone, in public spaces. So a big difference. So, you know, I, I, I don't think, and we've discussed this among ourselves a great deal, is that certainly. Not every place in the city would be appropriate, uh, to have that kind of more, a sort of intense. Uh, attempt at enforcement that, that we've suggested for downtown. And of course, that's one of the questions the council will need to ask is. You know, in this, in this narrow zone, it very well make, may make sense to have it applied to both indoors and outdoors. We patterned this after what Breckenridge did because they seem to be very successful. So the fines actually mirror what Breckenridge had. I, I was told by the town attorney, they have not issued any citations. And they've not, uh, collected any fines there. It's all been voluntary. Uh, they've had good success with that. So I, you know, again, I think so if, if, if the council is interested in making something broader. Citywide, then I, I would suggest that we go back to something that is more in line with what the governor's order now says. And maybe this is a good time and I don't want to step on, uh, Jose's presentation, but, but I think all of you by now are aware that. The world is changing again on Friday, uh, when we get, uh, an enhanced level of, um. Uh, you know, of compliance coming from the governor's office. So I, I think that we're going to see, and I, and I, I just glanced at it. It came in during the meeting. I saw the email and I glanced through the new governor's order. Uh, and I think it's actually a health order, it's not a governor's order as I recall, but it actually talks about cutting back on. Um, retail and how many people can be in retail spaces. So there's going to be a changing environment of enforcement. Here even in two days. So I'm sorry, Jose, maybe this is the time to kind of bring that into the equation.
Uh, absolutely. And I think that's one of the, the parts of this. It's an evolving situation that continuously changes. And, uh, it is something that I think everyone here and I congratulate, you know, chief, thank you and Dirk, thank you very much. Uh, you know, we put our heads together and we were trying to get something for y'all that you can have to, to enforce. And looking at things that we could do. And it wasn't, again, you know, with the citywide perspective of it. You know, we, we thought about that from the beginning. It's like, hey, let's see what we can do. Then we started thinking, well, if we can't effectively do it with the staffing that we have right now, that would be a resource allocation. So it'd be. So it'd be a good time to get councils, you know, portion of if we came back with a mandatory zone and they said, hey, we want to go citywide. We can then come back and say, well, here's the resources that we can identify that would help us reallocate to do this. And so there is very much a, you know, an attitude of how can we get this done? How can we get to this portion? But we also want to make sure that we're effective by it because one of the things that we don't want to overextend ourselves and the next thing you have is citizens saying, well, why did you even pass a citywide ordinance? If you can't enforce it. And that can be just as damaging as, you know, not having anything at all. So we wanted to make sure that we placed ourselves up in a portion where we could be successful. And if it's a citywide portion and that's kind of the guidance the council would get. I think we could get put our heads together in a couple of days and talk about that resource allocation and bring something back to the council. Of what we think we can, what we would need to make it happen and show you a efficient and effective citywide. Citywide effectiveness on the enforcement portion of it. But with that being said, I'll give it Amber, if you just want to update quickly. Just about the new governor's orders and kind of what's the new reality that will be hitting with this on Friday.
And then we can have a round of council input, like Kim had her hand up as well. And so we all want to weigh in on this. I know I didn't mean to hog the conversation here. Thank you, Amber.
Um, thank you, Jose and Mayor Brookie City Council. Earlier this evening, San Juan Basin Public Health released a release as most of you have likely seen it did hit the newspapers already. That La Plata County will be moving to what is being called Level Red Severe Risk. This is a new level on the dial for protect your neighbor. And the governor's newest public health order dropped late, well, earlier this evening. The largest changes that we are seeing currently in this public health order. Relate to high risk populations. It suggested that high risk populations stay at home. There are no variances eligible for counties or municipalities to this red order. Personal gatherings are restricted to zero, so no personal gatherings. And these are changes from the orange level. I'm not going to go through every single one of these, but. Places of worship will be maintained at the orange level. Restaurants will go to takeout curbside delivery or go to outdoor or open air only with groups of your own household. So that's basically takeout or outdoor dining with your household. There will be last call on the premise will be eight P M. For office spaces, this is another big change. Ten percent of the office staff and remote work is strongly encouraged. So if you have a business that is an office related business administrative type work. Reducing from twenty five percent capacity to the ten percent. Bars are continue to be closed. Gyms and fitness centers have an additional reduction down to ten percent capacity. Or ten people indoor per room, whichever is smaller. And reservations are required. For non-critical and critical retail. It may is maintained at the same as the orange level, but that's fifty percent with increased curbside pickup and delivery. And dedicated senior at-risk space. That is during for specific hours, so at-risk and senior hours specific for the retail. Indoor unseated events are closed. Indoor seated events and entertainment are closed. Outdoor unseated events and entertainment are reduced to twenty five percent capacity with seventy five people. Where you will attend only with members of your same household and maintain six feet spacing between groups. And that is the quick summary of the large changes. For La Plata County, we will move into Level Red Severe Risk on Friday. So I will say that for city staff, we are working diligently on moving our operations to be in compliance with the new level red. And we will be issuing a press release later this week with details for the public. On changes to city services or access, public access to facilities to be able to meet those requirements. We haven't figured out all the details yet, but they will be released through the Durango Herald and our social media and our webpage as soon as they're ready.
Wow.
Thank you, Amber, that that's pretty sobering. The other bit of information that we heard was. This is pretty much statewide. It's it's La Plata County for sure, based on our fairly exponential metrics that we're having right now that we're experiencing in terms of. Newly reported COVID cases, but also Archuleta County is soon to follow or are they also at the same level? I forget if they are imposing these same regulation, if the governor's imposing these same regulations on.
I have a list right here, Amber, if you want me to read it. Out of County, Arapaho County, Boulder, Broomfield, Clear Creek, Denver, Douglas. Jefferson, La Plata, Logan, Mesa, Morgan, Route, Summit and Washington, those are all the ones that were announced today.
Right, and the COVID policy, thank you, Bob. The COVID policy group, I mean, Archuleta County, which is also San Juan Basin Health Department, was the reason I brought it up. Is very close behind us. But Durango is definitely, La Plata County is experiencing a high level exponential growth in transmission rates right now, which is the cause for this. And particularly on the the metrics that we witnessed. That have been prepared for La Plata County is the fact that. The next two weeks are going to be absolutely critical to having any kind of control of the exponential growth of COVID in our in our in our town. We've seen it, it's our nine one one operators, it's in our schools, it's at the university, it's on Main Street, it's in a number of businesses. And so it's really to protect employee, our employee base and our service sector. To main to keep our businesses alive as opposed to be restrictive at all. It's it's meant to help the economy, not hurt the economy ultimately. It's that bad is it could it could breach that very, very quickly. So anyway, that's a little bit of the background of why the governor felt. This was very, very important to implement in in La Plata County. Starting Friday, Kim.
Yeah, so this actually raises a couple more questions than it answers.
Yeah.
So all these restrictions, who enforces this?
That would be the health department once again.
So in reality, it would be exactly like it is right now with the mask order.
As to any other violations other than the mask order, that's that's right, or or mask order that we would enforce.
No, I'm talking current, we don't have a mask ordinance right now. So so enforcement of these requirements of the state. Are going to be exactly the way they are right now as the enforcement of the mask required, state mask requirement is.
I think that's that's right. I mean, the this doesn't change the enforcement for the the new order going to the red level doesn't change the enforcement. Directly, if that's your question, that's right.
Right, so what I mean. If someone has more than ten people or if someone's going into the restaurant instead of doing pickup. That's still the health department and the county's enforcement requirements?
Right, you know, those are state orders, so those would be enforced.
So if if I can jump in for a second here, so at our policy meeting yesterday, we were briefed on the fact that the E O C, the Emergency Operations Center has been put into effect. And that's under La Plata County's Emergency Manager. And the goals of the E O C, one of the goals of the E O C, which San Juan Basin Health requested that the E O C be set stand stood up. The E O C is ready to go and one of their primary goals and functions is law enforcement. And so the discussions yesterday at the policy group were, we know that there's additional changes coming with Level Red. And how is how can this be enforced? So one of the options, and this hasn't been hashed out, but I think it would be great to have direction from the council or at least discussion here. Is are there resources that the city can provide to designate to the E O C? To help with enforcement of the public health order? And at the same time, I believe Chuck will be having the same conversation with his board for law enforcement. To dedicate resources to that law enforcement, E S F or emergency function staffing, the E O C. So that there can be enforcement out of the E O C for this public health order. And that's part of the solution, I don't think it's the entire solution. But I want to make sure that the rest of council knows that those discussions are happening at the policy group and San Juan Basin Health is concerned to the point that it made. Enforcement as one of the primary goals of the E O C. And Dean, if you wanted to fill in anything else, you also sit on that call.
No, that captures it fairly well and and that is, you know, on the. Knowing they're coming at it from that top end, if there was, you know, back to what we can do immediately. You know, which is I appreciate what Bob and and Dirk and and Jose have advanced to us today, I would, I would.
And do you mind if I finish my my question and and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry about that, yeah.
So so the. So how does this work? Who calls the E O C?
The San Juan Basin Health.
Okay, so who calls San Juan Basin Health or how does San Juan Basin? I am going somewhere with this, trust me. So how does San Juan Basin Health know?
You would issue, you would go into the portal and submit a complaint through the portal for public health violation complaints.
And then San Juan Basin Health has to go through their red tape to get it to E O C to follow up to order to issue enforcement.
That would be fairly seamless in the E O C would actually be monitoring the complaint portal. As I know, it's not like you got to call Leanne or somebody at San Juan Basin Health. It's a it's a seamless connection to enforcement.
Maybe I can weigh in on this a little bit from the enforcement side. So currently, the way the enforcement group was previous to this when we had the E O C prior and as it's continued to go on. Is the the complaints either come through San Juan Basin Health's portal that the county helped set up. Or they come through dispatch or a couple of different mechanisms. It could even come through our online reporting system at the Durango P D. We, depending on the jurisdictional authority based off of that, then we will go and investigate that and document it. And see exactly what, you know, if there is in fact a violation. If those violations are there, if they start piling up, we're able to develop a case. And that's where we then either go through a warning process, we serve notice upon the business or we take action. And that's the the steps that we take as a tiered system and that's what we decided as a group.
And that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Does the, does this new red condition also include mask wearing as one of its other things that it's enforcing?
Yes, the it doesn't really change the mask wearing, as far as I can tell. And I'll I'll put an asterisk here, we haven't digested the new order, we just got it. But it does keep, it does appear to keep the mask requirements in force. And to follow up on something that Bob just said, the city does not have the authority to write. A citation into our municipal court for a violation of a state order.
Right, you, by the way, Dirk, you did a really good job on that email you sent out delineating all of that and listing all of that. That was great, it was incredibly helpful and educational. So the kind of where I'm going with this is is what I hear we're being asked is to contribute resources of some sort toward the E O C for them to do enforcement. Of state orders. So I'm wondering what the impact of that will be in our community in town. So these orders change everything. It's no longer just not wearing a mask, it's a lot of other things that could be enforced by E O C. So if we're, if we can contribute resources and that may be dollars from the CARES Fund or it may be manpower, I don't know what that looks like. Do we need to actually have an ordinance if we now have a way to enforce that by getting E O C involved in it?
So I do have one thing that I want to make sure, we did ask Chuck Stevens to join us and he is the head of the E O C. So if we have specific questions related to the E O C, Chuck is here to answer those for the council. But I don't want to get away from councillor Baxter's or Mayor Proton Baxter's question. I just want to make sure the rest of the council is aware that Chuck is here and can answer E O C specific questions.
Yeah, and I know he's also been listening because he's was in the list of attendees before. So Chuck, do you have some further information for us about how this works? Thank you, Amber.
A council, can you hear me okay? It doesn't look like my camera's working, I apologize for that, maybe it'll come on in a moment.
I can hear you fine, Chuck, thanks for being here.
Great, yeah, I've been tracking the conversation because obviously this is one of the most, not even one of the most, this is the most important. Conversations we're having, not only in our local community and our state and our nation, I mean. This pandemic is affecting every one of us, so. San Juan Basin Public Health has asked that we activate the E O C. And what that means is. Our law enforcement group has been has been meeting regularly since March of this year. Attempting to unravel what has turned out to be an incredibly complex problem. As as we've watched the number of cases spike. Recently, following the Halloween and holiday and the gatherings and and. And everything that was associated with that. The the San Juan Basin Public Health has asked us to react, reactivate the E O C. And I think the concern is because. If the cases continue to rise and situation gets as bad as we fear that it's going to. We're going to need additional restrictions that are going to impact businesses, the curfews. We're primarily concerned about the impact on our workforce, whether that's police officers. The fire departments, as we've already seen, the nine one one centers, et cetera. So San Juan Basin Public Health is attempting to do contact tracing, they're attempting to do surveillance and control. And all of their primary functions of public health. And they've they've become to the point where they were overwhelmed, so they needed assistance from the E O C to deal with consequence management. So of course, we're going to help, we're going to do everything we can. The law enforcement group has been meeting since March. We will continue to meet and try to address all of the issues that we can to the best of our ability. But and I appreciate that everyone is looking for a very simple answer. But there are no simple answers, these are very complex problems. You know, there's there's multiple agencies involved, there's. These are just really complex problems that that need to be addressed and there are no simple answers.
So, go ahead. The question that that I asked earlier is. So the E O C, if I if I understood correctly, would like support from the city and other entities to in order to do the enforcement. But this enforcement, this order seems even stricter than the ordinance we would in. We would implement. So if we can now enforce through the E O C state orders that are even stricter than our ordinance would be. Why don't we go that route?
And and I was just going to add, from my experience at the World Food Program and working on major crises. This is what we would call a whole of government, where everybody succumbs people with their expertise. So we may, we have expertise in enforcement or we can purchase expertise or in code enforcement areas. And that might be the contribution to to Kim's point that that is most useful at this point in time. And so I I'm looking at it as a whole effort rather than individ, three individual groups. So I like what you're saying, I guess is what I'm saying.
Chief, if I can ask the question, so for us to enforce, maybe Dirk, you'll have to help a little bit on this. Do they have to actually be assigned to the E O C or can we assign everyone to the E O C and they can still enforce? I guess it's kind of, do they have to be specifically assigned for them to be able to enforce this state order? Or because the E O C is activated, we're okay with enforcing the state order?
Well, the authority from my understanding comes down under C R S twenty five one five fourteen. And that's going to be the one that is, you know, either provides information to the district attorney to take action. Based on a specific violation and or onto a business. So and I guess my question would be back maybe to Dirk on this from the legal perspective of it. But it it does specifically state that the district public health director or the county health director is the one that has to initiate that action. Now, they could maybe direct us to actually fill out the summons on that. And then we can go take point on that and actually take that action. We just have to be directed in order to do that from the director of public health is my understanding of what the statute is.
Well, that statute provides for either an action by the county attorney to seek in district court, an order, sort of a cease and desist order, if you will, or a injunction action against someone who's violating the law. Otherwise, again, we don't have any direct way to write tickets because we don't have, we haven't adopted, we, we haven't adopted a regulation that we're enforcing of our own. I will confess that I don't know what jurisdiction is bestowed by standing up the E O C. And I I don't know the answer to that.
Well, that's kind of my question. Does the E O C then allow us to do that through them without having to go through what you're talking about?
I, I don't know. I, I appear to be frozen. I don't know. Can anybody hear me?
We can hear you. Okay. Frozen though.
Okay. So, you know, more, more people to the E O C is, is not the issue here. Because, I mean, ultimately, this comes down to, to the, the, the three avenues of enforcement, I think. And I'm not a lawyer, so this is my understanding. But we have the civil, the criminal, or the administrative. Those are the three paths that we have, as I understand them. And so more people to the E O C, I don't think is the issue. I think the law enforcement group, you know, has, has the staffing and the, and the the, the brain power there to think through the issues. But I think it's more of a, of a policy decision about how we want to enforce. So if we have a violator, do we want it to be a criminal, a civil, or an administrative action? I think that's the question that as a community, we need to collectively answer. So that then, I mean, once we have that answer, then we can then peel it back and say, okay, now we know what we want to do, how do we want to do it?
So which of the three can the E O C do? Can the E O C do all three of those, or just two of them, or one?
Well, again, I, 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 go ahead.
I was gonna say, the, the E O C has a direct, you know, and I think what Chuck is saying is that there's not any direct enforcement action through the E O C, but you know, I'll, I'll take what Chuck said, there are these sort of three arenas that we could use, but I think this is a case by case analysis. Not one side doesn't fit all here in terms of how we want to approach a situation. You know, you may have violations of a variety of kinds. And it may be that we need to take a criminal action in certain cases. We refer something, you know, to the D A. We may want to restrain a, you know, situation in district court that is ongoing. You know, it's different than citing somebody who's walking along the sidewalk not wearing a mask. We're not going to take, you know, we're not going to refer that to the district attorney, nor are we going to file civil action in district court to restrain that. So, you know, again, each case has to be analyzed on its own merits, just like, you know, seeking the suspension of a business license, we would have to analyze those facts. We'd have to look at how strong a case we have. And that's not going to happen quickly. So none of these things happen fast.
So I think that maybe the clarification for Mayor Proton Baxter is it did sound like there was a statement that because the E O C was stood up, that there was an ability for us to enforce. And that seems to be a little hazy in regards to if that is actually accurate or not.
Yeah, and the response was yes. So.
It was yes beginning, and now it doesn't seem that it may be that solid of a yes, which is okay. It just means we have to look at a different avenue.
Right. I mean, the, the E O C is not a law enforcement body. So let's just be clear about that. We, the E O C in this, in this disaster is here for consequence management. So San Juan Basin Public Health is, is overwhelmed. They're at capacity to, they're trying to do contact tracing, they're trying to do disease investigation and control. So they have, they have consequence management where they need assistance. Community testing is a great example. You know, the community testing site was the top priority when, when public health requested assistance. The, as you all know, the, the site at the library, there were two and three hour wait times, negative impacts on the neighborhoods and on the residents, et cetera. And so the E O C came in, we observed for three or four days, we moved it over to the fairgrounds, and we relieve those negative impacts on the fairgrounds, and we're working now to decrease those wait times to, to more rapidly move citizens through, get their tests and increase the throughput. So that's a great example of consequence management. The, the law enforcement is, is another example, and that's where we're shifting our focus. So it's, it's a complex issue, as I said. It's going to be a tough nut to crack. But if we can take that on, we being the E O C, which is not just the county. So think about, think, think about a fire and think about our E O C during the four sixteen fire. We have representatives from L P E A and C D O T and the State Patrol and, you know, Atmos Energy and, you know, any number of other organizations, because we all come together to solve these complex complex problems. And that's how we're successful as a community. And so that's what we'll try to do here.
So Chuck, I, thank you. I see it as areas of like the changing the last call to eight o'clock. That's probably going to need enforcement of some level. And if, if it does get bad, as there are in some locations, there are going to be curfews. And we're going to need enforcement there. And that's where it seems to be a natural for our police department, our code enforcement to be involved in this area. I recognize Dirk, that, you know, it's going to be a variety of avenues, whether it's civil or criminal. But it sounds to me like we need to stand up or whatever the correct term is here, but to supply personnel to this team to make certain that the capacity is there to address this. I know you're still sorting out jurisdiction, but I also think to Kim's point, we've got a more restrictive set of conditions starting on Friday than just a mask order.
No, I agree with that. And I think that it may be that because, as you pointed out, there may be a new set of enforcement issues coming out of this new restricted environment that what is priority at that point may shift, you know, and we may frankly, be less concerned about the occasional person who doesn't wear a mask and more concerned about, you know, bars that don't close on time, or restaurants that have too many patrons, or a wide variety of those kinds of things.
I was gonna say, I'm sorry, go ahead, Melissa. Counselor, you have a second?
Well, I'm just, I've been listening and, you know, there's a lot of focus on the E O C, but I think I heard from Chuck Stevens that the E O C is not meant to do the legal enforcement. And I guess what I wanted to just talk about a little bit here is that just to kind of frame, potentially change the frame of our conversation. I think that we're in a situation as a community with safety at such high risk and all of us needing to step up as leaders of our community to work together and collaborate to do the best that we can do to save our community from truly dire straits, that we have to look at every single avenue that we can look at. And the enforcement may change, I recognize that. And we are getting, I think, too caught up on on, on our ability to completely enforce it. I think that the ability, if we set ourselves in a position where we can enforce it when and where we need to and have to, and give ourselves some authority to enforce, then that could help us tremendously. And what I'm hearing here is, you know, just everyone keeps going like this in our community. They need to do this. They need to do this. And all of that so far has gotten us nowhere. Here we are today, and we're about to go to a different stage. And, and the best thing for all of us is if that stage that we're about to go in could be as short as possible. And if we could get back to a little bit more normal states within two weeks or maybe a month. But the longer we don't take steps to address, be it mask ordinance, be it social requiring of the executive order from the governor, then the longer it's going to take us to get back to normal. And so I guess I feel like we're not taking the approach I'd like to see us taking, which is I, I want us to change our approach. I want us to step up our approach. I want us to do what we need to do to try to get our community out of what is clearly a crisis, looming crisis. And and I'm looking to all of you to say, you know, help, how, how can we do this? How can we work together? And how can we change and reframe this debate?
I take your laser right on, Melissa. And, you know, that kind of brings us back to the original proposal that Dirk and, and Jose had worked out for us in terms of the, our own fairly extensive mask order and those, the no mask zones and how that could, and follow up on how that can be implemented on a wider scale regardless of what's happening with, with the movement from the state level. I think that's, you know, part of this is a culture war, as, as we've all recognized in the past, and I think it's shock and awe needs to happen right now. If, you know, the person from Century Health that was creating the model talked about, you know, if something happens, when I, I think my comment in the meeting the other day at COVID was what's going to happen? And what I didn't know was what was the governor was anticipating proposing. But clearly, one of the actions that you suggest is, is, you know, that we need to take is let's get back on track with our original ordinance in some fashion. And if it's, if it gets superseded by something better from the state or more impactful, great, but at least we've taken that step. And and then second, the only other thing is before Barbara wants to speak, I know, is let's take some of that seven hundred thousand dollar COVID CARES Act money. I, I think it's probably the best investment we could make right now to, whether it's, you know, we're, we are not in a in, in a recovery stage yet. We are, we are in a triage stage relative to COVID. And so we need to spend some of that money on enforcement, if at all possible, and help, help the chief out, but also help send the message and, and in whatever ways creatively we can to get a lot better capability of enforcement. So those fifteen officers on the street are not carrying the brunt of this. It should be, and we should attack it civilly and criminally and administratively, all three of those avenues, as you've suggested, Melissa. I mean, you've got to do it, hit it on all fronts. So number one, let's get back to it and think about in taking action on this ordinance that's been proposed. And also look at figuring out what else we would spend that seven hundred thousand dollars on that's more important than, than enforcement right now today.
Clarification that the seven hundred thousand dollars can be used for. And I think that it also goes away at the end of December. So Amber, do you have that information? How much have we spent? What can it be spent on? Can we do enforcement with it? Because if we can, then I think we should, to Dean's point, have this conversation about the ordinance.
Okay, so the city did receive what is called coronavirus relief funding. This is a pass through CARES Act money, went to the state. The state used the C D B G formula to allocate the money to the counties. And then the counties worked with the municipalities within their county to suballocate those monies based on formula. And we received money in, so the announcement of the money was made in June. La Plata County received four million eight hundred and twenty three thousand thirty seven dollars. Bayfield, Ignacio, Durango, and La Plata County entered into an agreement that was fully executed by the drop dead date of July seventh. The city of Durango's allocation was seven hundred and thirty two thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars. And the funds were made available mid to late August for us to start using. So I think it's important to note that this is reimbursable, so we have to spend the money first. And then we go through a D O L A process for reimbursement, and D O L A has four specific steps in their review. And so far, many of the expenses that we have expected to be eligible based off the reading of the language in both the federal treasury language, as well as the additional language that came out subsequently, were ineligible. So we're working through the process with D O L A to understand how we can re, submit our reimbursements to allow for the eligible expenses to be fully reimbursed. We made our first request on October sixteenth for ninety thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety nine cents. Like I mentioned, there were items that were ineligible in that, and we continue to work through that with D O L A. We received to date thirty eight thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars and sixty five cents in the first reimbursement. There is a second reimbursement request that we are working on, which has fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty one dollars so far in that request. And there are additional outstanding items that we will be billing that are eligible. One of those items is that we had worked with Visit Durango to code all of their expenses related to COVID outreach, marketing, education, and advertising, which is an eligible expense, and the city will be billing that towards the CARES Act funding. We're anticipating somewhere between, around seventy five thousand dollars, but I haven't received that reimbursement request from Rachel at Visit Durango. Additionally, there are a number of items that can be expendable, and I have the NOFA here. So we, we can hire additional staff or contract for, for public safety. That is an eligible expense. One of the issues that we look at is staffing, but like Jose had mentioned earlier, and Chuck mentioned as well, we are looking to get to yes, and find a way to success. So that's a completely eligible expense. Other eligible expenses include when we shift a person's workload from, let's say, you're hired to do one job, like Alex Rugoff, for example, is one of the ones we're working through trying to charge. He shifted to recovery response. That's an eligible expense. So figuring out the documentation necessarily necessary to D O L A for that. Sorry, this moved on me. So anything related to public safety, strictly targeted at COVID response, recovery planning, testing, employment training programs, we have, we're looking into Open Gov and Neo Gov, which are two items that will help us within the organization. Business reimbursement grants, so partnering with the restaurants downtown to find ways to reimburse for expenditures that they've had to incur related to COVID nineteen and shifting their business model could be reimbursable through our CARES Act money.
Something like delivery fees on third party delivery services?
Exactly. So we will be looking at that. And I've already reached out to Dave Woodruff. He responded back, and our, our goal is to have a conversation with finance and the folks at D O L A to figure out exactly what we will need for reimbursement. So we can reach out to our community partners and expend those funds. I will say that municipalities across the state are challenged with spending down these dollars because of the restrictions. And it's important to note that this is different than the CARES money that was allocated to public transit and to the airport. Those had limited to no restrictions. And we've been able to easily spend down those dollars. So we're working towards it. Our goal is to spend this money down and not give it back. We are at a race against the clock, because as of now, there are no extensions that have been granted by D O L A on this, and we will need to give the money back that's not spent by December thirtieth.
And can you, can you talk a little bit more about the fact that the fund, the ability for the funds to be used for staffing for public safety?
ability for the funds to be used for staffing for public safety? I believe that's been the topic of conversation. So that's what it has been, correct?
So let me pull, I'm going to pull up the Q and A from the, um, the guidance that we have.
If I may, Amber, uh, just kind of trying to, to get to where I think maybe we can get to somewhere. And I think at this point, from a staff perspective, I'll look at the council and ask, where do you want us to go? And I think that's where we need to get that answer because it doesn't seem that the mandatory mask zone was the, hit the mark. And that's, that's perfectly okay. As staff, we can be nimble. We just need to know what's the direction that the council as a whole wants us to go. And then we can go figure that out and come back relatively shortly and tell you this is how we get there.
I'll, I'll share where I would like you to go. Um, first of all though, I do want to thank you because you turned something around in short order, uh, both the chief, Dirk and Jose. So I appreciate that. But I want to Melissa's comments, I want to put everything we can from our city resources to this effort to stopping this spread. And I believe actually enforcement is the thing that we, enforcement and a campaign that along with that are the two things we can probably put, we can bring to bear in a way that the public health cannot. So I think our ability to enforce is critical. We've heard from San Juan Basin Health that indoor is a much greater risk than outdoor. So if we have limited capability for our enforcement, I want to focus on anything that has to do with mask wearing indoors and with maintaining that six foot distance. We've also heard that, um, drinking later, uh, into the evening, people are less inhibited, they're talking louder and we see cases there. So I want to see a focus on ability to address that in whatever capacity we have. And then we've heard that back room non-compliance with the, the mask wearing is also contributing to this. So when I think about it, getting the best thing for our buck, those are the areas I'd like to focus on. And I also say, I mentioned coupled with, I think we need, several counselors have talked about this, we need it, along with enforcement, we need an all out public relations, uh, campaign to make it socially unacceptable to not help stop this spread. I mean, we have to all feel like this is what we want to do. And I also, to Dean's point, I want to emphasize that public health is the cornerstone of our economic health. And this is, um, essential. And I'm also, uh, very much aware that time is of the essence. So I want to end by saying that if this requires a special meeting of us to come back to this, I am happy to make the time available and I do appreciate your work in bringing us this information thus far and a, and a draft ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, uh, to make sure I'm on, uh, thanks Barbara. So to kind of wrap this, bring consensus to this, uh, Melissa, you had a comment?
Well, I, I think that we're all going to, I thought that Jose wanted to hear from all of us.
Yeah, go around the, go around. So let's start with you, Melissa.
Sure. I, uh, absolutely echo councillor Knowsworthy's comments. I think they were well said. Um, I want to recognize, um, as a, the community that we're all cohabitating in together, that our public health, um, is, um, you know, at, at, is maxed and they need help. Um, and so I'm, I'm thankful that we're getting back on the topic of trying to do what we can, like, how can we get there? It's that culture, Jose, of, um, how can we get to yes? What can we do to get to yes? Um, and there's a lot of reasons why, you know, it, it's difficult, um, and challenging, but I really want to push ourselves to do what we can because it is our responsibility as leaders in our community to look at the public health and wellbeing of our people. It's our number one priority. And that's this, the safety and health of our people. So we are also responsible. I do think that we have to look carefully at the governor health order. I think that there are, you know, you know, at, at, at these new restrictions and at the, at the new executive order that he's, he's talking, you know, the use of business licenses. I think we should look at that a little bit more carefully. If there's any avenues there, if not, I think we have to still go back to the fact that we're trying to create a culture of mitigating the spread. We have to create a culture of looking at various things such as reciprocity. We want to build that, like if I'm wearing a mask, I'm protecting you, I want you to protect me. And also just the whole thought around, um, you know, understanding that people's behavior is, um, you know, it has a direct impact on the, uh, our availability of resources within our own community. It has a direct impact on our ability to go to our restaurants, to stay up past a certain curfew, to go to personal services, to go to gyms. And for people who aren't complying, there should, you know, that we have some social proof here, some social pressure that should have an impact because we are at a different point now. We aren't just at a point where there's politics at play. We're at a point where, you know, we're at the verge of completely shutting down. So I think what all these things need to come into play. So whatever we can do to take, uh, proactive action, I'm for it.
If I could just clarify, just to make sure, cause I want to make sure I'm crystal with the, the guidance, was there anything that councillor Knowsworthy said that you did not agree with? And I, I heard you say echo, so I just want to make sure because that, she gave specifics. I kind of want to wrap around that. And if there's anything additional specifically that she left out that maybe you would want to add that I can get more clearance on?
You know, I think that, um, our future is a little bit uncertain. And so I think we may have to adapt as we go.
Sure.
You know, where she's, where she's pointing, I think that I'm hearing the same type of things that these are, a lot of the spread is happening in the back, you know, employee parties, your house parties. So whatever we can do to kind of address some of that as well.
Thank you.
So, um, I also agree in general. So I have basically three specific things. I think an ordinance is if, as long as we can enforce an ordinance, I don't want something out there that if someone's not wearing a mask and we get a call on it, there's nothing we can do about it. That doesn't make any sense to me. So, but I think that we should not restrict it to one concentrated area. And the reason why is I don't think that's fair to other businesses. There's enough challenges it is already to confront someone and say, you need to be wearing a mask in my business. I mean, we saw that in O'Reilly's, there was a huge controversy there. And I think our businesses need support and we can't selectively decide which businesses we're going to support. So, um, I, I think it needs to be citywide. And I also agree that yes, there's a, um, a large number of people downtown and a lot of those are tourists, but to Dean's point, there's a ton of people in Walmart, there's a ton of people in Home Depot. And it isn't just the tourist that's causing us issues. It is what both Melissa and Barbara spoke to, which is the family groups, the gatherings, the after hours, things that go on. And those same people go to Walmart and Home Depot too. So, um, I think it needs to be, um, uh, community wide, so citywide. And I really think that if we can use CARES dollars to, I don't know if we, by saying we have to use them by December 31st, I don't know if that means we can hire, you know, five staff people at $60,000 a year and then that gets paid for and we do it tomorrow to do this enforcement? I don't know what that means, but I want us to be really creative with those dollars so that we make sure that we use them because we've, we haven't taken advantage of it to the extent I think we could have, um, in the past few months. So I really would like to see us be aggressive about how can we use that money to do this kind of enforcement? And a program about, so Durango cares. So that's, you know, we're talking about the culture, like both Melissa and Barbara and Dean have mentioned this culture. So how do we make it a culture of Durango cares? And that means we have signs. They can range in size. All they say is Durango cares and two or three of those letters have masks on them and they are everywhere. They are everywhere you can imagine and they are brightly colored and they attract attention. And every time someone's not wearing a mask, no one has to say anything. All they have to do is point because there's a sign right there everywhere. And those CARES dollars can go for that too, I'm thinking. So let's get, you know, and we make it Durango, Durango cares, right? So it's on banners everywhere. It's on every door, everywhere. It's on the street. It's on the sidewalks. It's on our police cars. It's everywhere. And we, if we can get this money to support that, then I think we're going to be successful because we have the culture that we want to create and we have the enforcement.
I just have to say, that is a great idea. I support that wholeheartedly. I would love to see that type of campaign. It, it's, I, I think that that's what we have to do. We, we need to at least start there. I, I really.
It doesn't have to reference any ordinance. It doesn't have to be, it's two words, right?
Well said. Well said. Great idea.
I, I think it's great. And the fact that it's citywide, that was a given for me. I've been saying all along, I appreciate the first effort, but you know, uh, COVID doesn't know a street's boundary. So I, I think we need to, that was a given. And I would love to see a combined effort enforcement, uh, and then a campaign all out.
I, I'm, I'm also on the, um, citywide. I, I guess what I feel on that for me, and thanks for bringing that up, is what's good enough for downtown is good enough for the rest of the city. And consistency is key. It has to be consistent, uh, otherwise it's going to be too confusing. So I think that if we can get some ability to enforce where we need to and when we need to, then we apply consistent rules throughout.
So the city, or the zone, remember was indoor and outdoor. So when we're talking citywide, I'm, I'm assuming you're not meaning indoor and outdoor citywide.
I'm not. It's indoor personally, to Barbara's point earlier, what San Juan Basin's health says is the spread indoors is much more significant.
Okay. Just want to make sure I'm clear.
Yeah, I added indoor and where six feet can, of social distance cannot be maintained, um, but with the emphasis on indoor. Um, I also added, um, the curfews, particularly with the bars, uh, closing early, how can we help with that enforcement? And then the other comment, just to remind was, um, the back, the employees wearing masks all the time when they're at work, not just those that are front facing. And I recognize to what Melissa said earlier, I, and others have said, this is going to change. If we don't do better, our restrictions are going to get more severe. And then we may be looking at curfews or anything else. So I, I think it is, all hope is for us to come together as a community and address this so that we don't have to go back to anything as severe as a complete stay at home.
That's the point. Yeah, go ahead, Melissa.
Add, um, I want to just, um, share that councillor Batine was so disappointed that he could not be at this meeting. And he did share with council, so I think it's fair to share publicly that he was completely in the support of us stepping up in, in however, in, in ways that we hadn't thought of before to take action. He wanted this as well. And so I think he will be very happy with where we are coming full circle here tonight. Um, and I just want to reiterate that I, I believe that he would be in support of it based on the email he wrote to all of us prior to the meeting.
I, I concur with that. And, um, what, and, uh, what I'm, I couldn't be prouder of everybody for, you know, just coming up with, uh, you know, what I had hoped is, uh, a pretty radical, uh, next step and, uh, for, for enforcement as well as culture creation. Uh, it, it shouldn't be this hard. And so, uh, my hope was, uh, after the, after this was de-politicized a little bit last week or so, that it would, it would not be, uh, the people would be at a higher level of compliance. That's not happened, but there are places, I'm, I'm on an island and people are freaked out totally that they will lose their jobs and lose their economy if they don't comply. And it's, uh, it, I'm watching it happen as I speak. I've got a wristband that allows me to go outside my hotel room. Uh, it's that important to everybody, uh, that, uh, I've been, you know, everybody visiting is tested and everybody has a mask on. I got chastised by a drive through fast food cashier today that I, as I was coming in my car, that I didn't have my mask on to, and it's that, I mean, people outside are wearing them, people inside are wearing them, everybody's wearing masks. So I think we've made some great progress here today. We've got some money, a potential source of it. I would suggest if we need to hire, uh, you know, uh, a marketing firm and get some help to do this right, uh, because staff is impacted. Uh, uh, San Juan Basin Health doesn't have the resources right now to make this happen. If we need to go out and, and get some professional help to, uh, like immediately, uh, to make this happen, we should do that. We could paint it on Main Avenue, you know, in bright letters, uh, our own version of Black Lives Matter, we can paint it on the street. We can hang it on the stanchions. We can do everything that Kim was suggesting and, uh, uh, because that's, other communities are doing that. It's that important and, uh, we can recycle it for something else i- in a better time. But, uh, right now, this is the battle we need to fight. So, uh, I think, uh, uh, Jose, I think you had a, I don't know if we want to summarize those points or if we just want to ponder them a little bit and, uh, uh, between you and Barbara, kind of figure out to make sure that gets documented in some fashion. But I think we made some great progress here tonight and, uh, which incorporates all the good work that Dirk did and Jose did. Uh, let's get that moving. Let's write an ordinance, let's, let's adopt it at, in the nearest possible timeframe, uh, and get some graphics moving as well. So, and hope that, uh, the, the police department isn't expected to deliver, uh, food to us in that, uh, for, I was thinking if we could, uh, order from Elmore and get it delivered in a squad car, that'd be pretty interesting, but, uh, that, we won't put that burden on you, Bob. It's not our tent here. Uh, anything else?
I, I'd like to emphasize what, what Bob did say is that health enforcement is not really a police function, right? In, in that sense. And so to the extent that we can hire temporary workers to help us with the appropriate enforcement at an appropriate level, I, I think that's also in our best interest. We're not looking at permanent positions. We're looking at a surge of, uh, staffing to help address this right now.
But, and, and you're right, Barbara, thanks, thanks for that in terms of, you know, we don't deputize these people, but what, what authority do they have? What is their role? And I was reminded when we're having this whole discussion about the EOC, um, the EOC can have a direct conduit to the district attorney, uh, if I'm not, so there's some mechanism there and, uh, that, um, perhaps could give these people some, you know, not being deputized police officers for the city of Durango, but have some authority to, uh, be, uh, but to, 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 to turn it over to the right person, then that might be the DA instead of, uh, Denver, Durango Police Department issuing a citation. It's just a, uh, another avenue of enforcement. So I won't get too far into that, but that's, that's my thinking on who, how we employ, uh, just individuals that are, uh, trying to be a good communicators, but B also, um, have some enforcement capability through another vehicle, uh, without being deputized.
Can figure all that part of it out. Do you have, do you have direction from us, Jose?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So Dean, can we then move on to item number 12 or do we need to?
I think we should move on to item number 12. Absolutely.
It's administrative and there are two executive sessions, 12.1 and 12.2 for, um, discussing personnel matters relating to annual evaluations of the city attorney and municipal judge. And I, I would like to suggest that, because I did not get your, uh, evaluations, that we postpone this until such time as you can get those to me, which is hopefully really soon. And then we can.
I, I, I love that idea and I appreciate your tolerance and, uh, given the hour here, uh, I probably am not going to get those to you this evening because it's now early morning in Puerto Rico.
Tomorrow, so.
Yeah.
Soon, Dean.
Yeah, no, and, uh, that's, uh, that's appropriate and, uh, we probably wouldn't, uh, make great decisions on that front anyway, so.
So then the next thing, if council agrees to that, how do you guys feel about, Melissa?
To, to continue that for another.
No executive session tonight, especially we'll give Dean some extra time.
Done, done.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Number 13 is council reports and actions, and I have a ton of stuff, but I'm not going to do it tonight at 10:30.
No, but I do believe we need, we do need to set a date and be pulled, maybe not tonight, to address either what comes out of this discussion and also the third party, um, discussion as well. So I, I've, we agreed to some urgency to come back to. So I, I, we agreed to some urgency to come back together as a council on that.
Yes. And I did want to say one thing though, because this is a compliment to staff. Um, I was part of a state of this, uh, state of recycling panel, Colorado Recycles this week. And the, our city was, um, in the top five recognized recyclers in the state. And we are actually number four and we got four out of five. So we were 30%, 33% in our diversion rate among numerous other things that qualified us for this. So I want to give more, uh, information on that later, but I wanted to acknowledge staff now because it just happened and I wanted everyone to know that we've received that great honor. And the Colorado Sun has an article in it which mentions us quite, uh, quite a bit actually. And so there's also a, um, report that the state of Colorado did that shows all this. So in the future, more info, but I just wanted to say thank you to staff and, and to our community for supporting recycling and sustainability.
Yeah, I'd like to officially recognize folks, uh, in a couple of weeks on that very issue, um, in, uh, the staff and the award that was provided, uh, that's awesome, so.
And, and Dean, I'd actually like, you have gotten quite a few emails that have come in during the course of this conversation. To the extent that the, the information is available, can you give the community an update on our, um, our hospital status and issues there? I know we're hearing about, uh, patients coming from Wyoming into Northern Colorado and issues there. Is there any update that you can share with the community?
I think we can give a, a quick synopsis between Amber and I. And Amber actually had prepared a, uh, synopsis of the, of the meeting that was held Monday afternoon. Uh, but, uh, I don't know if Amber, if you're prepared to talk about that or I could just give my, the bed situation and, and also, uh, my interpretation of that because it was a little heated between myself and, and, uh, the Centura folks relative to, uh, what their actual situation currently is given the statewide situation. But go ahead, Amber.
One thing I'd like to add is, is I was very disappointed that we did not hear back from Michael Murphy, who is the Centura local Mercy CEO, um, about the information and the data that we're requesting to make good decisions. That was really disappointing.
Right. Amber, I don't know if you have just a couple of points that you wanted, but be salient or if not, I can, uh, I can speak to it. Amber, you're on the-
I'm going to pull up that report and anything you miss, I'll add in.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll just give an overview, which is, uh, you know, the, uh, uh, we're headed for a really, uh, significant increase in hospitalizations. So Centura was asked, uh, how, you know, how, how many new COVID patients they are getting? They're getting four to six per day. COVID patients per day, right now, today in, at Mercy. So how many, uh, I know that they have approximately 27 ICU beds. So when I calculated it for Mercy, I said that four to six per day, uh, into 27 means you're going to be out of ICU beds. You're going to be out of beds in, um, in, you know, a week, uh, at, at Mercy. Uh, I know that, uh, I had a doctor that was called about a patient in Cortez and they were, uh, they, they, because COVID, they were, a COVID patient in Cortez was seeking, uh, help and they couldn't fit them into San Juan regi-, or not San Juan regional, but, uh, San Juan, uh, Southwest Memorial in Cortez could not, uh, take them on. They were full. So they were trying to refer them to Mercy. They were, they wouldn't take them. And so it was a situation where it's this giant game of whack-a-mole, where can you go as a COVID patient regionally? And so, uh, I know that hospitals in Denver are being impacted by Wyoming. And then, uh, uh, just the one I'm most familiar with, St. Joe's and National Jewish Hospital, uh, top respiratory hospital in the country cannot take any more COVID patients. They're full. Their ICUs are full and they have staffing issues. And so, uh, that's the issue that Mike Murphy indicated and rightfully so, I believe. It's an accurate situation. It doesn't really matter about the beds. He didn't say it in those terms, but it really doesn't matter about the beds and everybody trying to matriculize this whole thing about how, what is our capacity from a bed count or ICU rooms? It's about who can adequately treat COVID when they go to the hospital. And that is a limited number of physicians and nurses that know any, I don't want, when I get COVID, I don't want to go and have a pediatrician just because they're a physician looking over me, you know, telling me that I'm going to be okay. That's, you know, we do not have capacity, staff capacity, medical staff capacity in any, uh, in the aggregate of all our hospitals in our community to, to deal with what's coming, period. And that's what, uh, their own model showed that pretty accurately and, and, but they, you know, in the hospital business, you don't want to admit that. You can't admit that, really. That would cause panic. We are, and clearly I am panicked about this situation in Durango, uh, in our region. Uh, we are the hub. We can't serve our neighbors. Our neighbors aren't, you know, uh, you know, Navajo Nation is full. They go to New Mexico. We can't go, we can't send patients to San Juan regionally in Farmington either. They don't have the capacity to, for overflow, which was our surge, uh, opportunity previously. So we're in a bit of a state. And so that's my, my synopsis of where we're at. Uh, I don't think we need to be counting ICU beds anymore. We're past that. Uh, and I, you know, we just don't have capacity and we will not have past maybe two more weeks if we, unless we do radical, uh, mitigation right now. Amber, you've got probably a softer sell.
Dean, Dean, I do think, um, the urgency of that needs to be communicated to the public. And unfortunately, we're, this is happening at the end of the, of, uh, the day. Uh, and I noticed that we don't even have, the, um, Shannon has left as well. So it, it might be a mayor's, uh, message that's communicated out in, in full force. I might want to recommend or something to that effect that the public hears the urgency of the need to turn this around.
I think that's, uh, is anything I said inaccurate, Amber?
No, not at all. Um, the only thing that you didn't touch on was that there is a statewide medical, uh, plan in place to share locations, how, for patient transfers. Um, however, the other critical piece was is the transportation plan is not in place. So there's a plan that allows for transfers if they're possible, but the transportation piece isn't in place, um, which is-
Well, who are you going to transfer them to when everybody's full?
We transfer from Durango, Colorado, you don't transfer any longer to Denver because they are full. You can't, uh, you can't do it. You can, you know, uh, and there's no, and so that's, that's where the state's at. They're about a month behind on the situation. They're trying to develop these strategies for, and that's the same thing that, uh, similar thing, when we say transfer, we're talking about patients. But, uh, uh, Mercy was very quick to say that Centura Health has, oh, we can, um, move people around. We've got staffing capability. We, we can grab people from around the state. I think the truth we know, and there are no people willing to give up their position in Denver to, because they're maxed, they're exhausted and they're not going to, except for a vacation, come to Durango to serve the medical needs of our community. Not going to happen. I know those people. They're not coming here.
Nationally. So we also draw from other states either. So this is a-
These people are exhausted. Physicians are exhausted. Nurses are exhausted. What you see on CNN and other is, is absolutely truth. I mean, it's like, we've been doing this for nine months. We've been, we're suffering some exhaustion. Uh, they are going home every day to their kids and, and elderly people and, you know, friends with the potential of dragging COVID with them. Um, it's, it's a really bad situation in the medical community right now. So anyway, that's my soapbox. I'd be glad to, uh, temper it down a little bit and, and make a public statement soon, so.
I, I, I think that's very important, Dean. I think you have inside knowledge that the rest of us as council as a whole, and I think the community, what I'm hearing you say is we're kind of on our own and we're kind of in this together. So, I mean, we have got to turn this around so that we don't, uh, completely maximize our health system.
That's, that's exactly right. And it's not complex. That's the other thing. It's, the, the solution is so simple. If we had, uh, but, but people are being made into non-believers about it. I mean, it's like if you just wear a mask, it's so effective, uh, and, uh, it's been politicized and we need to get right past that because, uh, otherwise we're going to lose some people and, and, and lose workforces, not lose them from dying. I'm not threatening that everybody's going to die. I'm just saying that we are going to, as, using our 911 call center as an example, uh, we will have abbreviated services and businesses will suffer from lack of staffing. Uh, and, uh, and that's not good for the economy. It all comes back to the economy as well. And so what, uh, what is good for health is good for the economy for certain. So people have figured out, I mean, you can sell more widgets, you can sell more everything if you just simply, uh, get, help everybody get through this in the next month. So anyway, that, thanks for letting me soapbox for a moment. And I know it's late for everyone, so it's about two o'clock here, so it's almost fun. Anyway, uh, is that the last item on our agenda, Mayor Proton Baxter?
Yes. Am I off of mute here?
Yes.
It is. And Dean, I am doing council connection in the morning, so.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. I'm going to do more earthquake inspection and first thing, six o'clock, so, uh, with that-
May I ask Jose before we sign off, uh, again, to Kim's point and others thanking the staff, but Jose, we talked about a lot, you're coming back together, we're working in real time. What might be a realistic goal for getting a revised thinking on help for the EOC in code enforcement, uh, around these topics?
So, uh, I smile because, uh, Chief and Dirk and I have already been talking about that these past like 10 minutes of where do we think we can go? Uh, we're going to shoot for, uh, you know, as quickly as we can. Um, I'll talk a little bit with Dirk. If Dirk, you have anything to add because he's actually going to be the one who's writing the ordinance. So I don't want to throw something out where he'll look at me like you're, you're, that might be a little too fast, but I know we had had some talks of turning this around quickly. Dirk, do you have a timeframe on the ordinance?
I think I could get something done in a couple of days. I think I heard what you said in terms of the ordinance, but there's some other elements will take longer. So Friday is, was tossed out as a, as an idea to have a meeting? I don't know, um, what works. Are you guys going to be around Monday?
We as a community, yeah, we as a council would need to come together at least to reach a consensus if, uh, on this, so.
You would need to vote on an ordinance, yeah.
I think Monday is realistic, quite honestly. Uh, in my schedule as well, I'll be flying back on Friday. Um, I've extended another day to work here, but, um, I'll be back on Friday.
We don't know, we obviously don't know what Christmas schedule is going to be like, but is everyone else available on Monday?
Oh, yeah, I'll probably see him this weekend in Denver, uh, and, uh, but I'm sure he'll be back on Monday, so.
Well then, let's try for Monday.
I think Monday will help because we'll see whatever happens on Friday, whatever the final orders or things are, so we can take a look at that. We'll be running parallel tracks, so there will be a track to get the ordinance and then there's going to be an implementation track. Uh, so we're, we'll, Monday sounds good.
That sounds great, Jose. Well, and I hope this is good news because of the community, because, you know, the governor's order is not great news for many, many businesses in our community, but, uh, it's, it's what's necessary and this, it's kind of like ripping a Band-Aid off. It's, uh, if we can do the, everybody work together for a short period of time, it'll be better for everybody in the end. So, uh, that's what the governor's looking at.
And one more point, because I want to reinforce this to Counselor Baxter, to Kim's point, if the EOC has called us and, and, and what our contribution is code enforcement, it may not require, uh, an ordinance. It may just require the surge of our, our staff to enforce this. So whatever it is you can deliver to us by Monday, that we can provide our help to this effort.
Got it.
And, and the PR around it as well. So anyway, uh, awesome, awesome. Well, if there's a, I could just talk about this all night, but I think we probably better not. So, uh, Jose's wishing he could work, how to get stuck in this job anyway, but, uh, it's, but anyway, thanks for, everybody for sticking with it this evening and working on really tough decisions. And, uh, and, uh, with that, if there's no other discussion, uh, I'll adjourn this meeting.